Stand for the pledge. Mr. Nahal, can you lead us in the pledge group?
Pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could all stand for a moment of silence in memory of President Bush. Walter, do we have any public comments, sir?
Pat Erickson, please.
Pat Erickson, 655, Connecticut. I am a member of the community center committee, but I am here speaking on my own accord. This has no bearing with the community center themselves, the committee. They don't know I'm speaking. Just so you know, this is not my booster seat. This is my book of all the files that I have since I've been serving on the committee. So we are really trying to get some work done. I have a very bad back. I sit through these meetings by taking drugs to get through them and putting on painkillers, but I don't know if it's more excruciatingly painful for the mental anguish I'm feeling now of frustration or actually my spinal fusion. We put together a survey that was not acceptable to the town council. Last meeting Greg Mullen tried to tell everybody here that he had gone out and gotten four survey estimates. Nobody would let him speak. It wasn't acceptable. You said to us you wanted a professional survey. We came before you and asked for a professional survey. And we're getting nowhere. And it is extremely frustrating. The other night we sat there for three hours with no heat. And I was so frustrated, I said, "If the town council cannot give us insight as to what they actually want from us, let's do our own survey. If you cannot fund a survey, I'm asking you to please, as a member of the public, not as a member of the committee, please formulate what it is that will be acceptable to you, how we can put a footprint on this survey." I checked with an IT specialist. There is a way of locking it down so it can only be taken once. I would suggest that we put names and addresses so we know the people have taken it. And if you're not willing to fund a survey, at least give us enough of a budget that we can do a mailing to get out to the public. And we will do whatever it takes diligently, no matter how many hours it takes, to do what we've been asked to do. And that is to find out if this town wants a community center and if they do, where and what the cost will be. And if you would also provide input on what you'd like on the survey if you want us to do it, that would be extremely helpful. But right now, we have spent almost a year. We have, I believe, three meetings left. And I hate to see all the hours and work that we have put into it, even though it appears that nobody thinks we're doing anything, to be utilized. Because at the end of the day, folks, somebody has to make this decision, whether it be us or you. And God bless you, I don't know how you do 'em all, because I wouldn't want your jobs for all the money in China. I really wouldn't. You're all volunteers, you do an outstanding job. I have found from this committee that it is gut-wrenching, because when you've got no money and you've got one side of the fence that wants one thing and another side that wants another, there's no middle ground. So what I'm asking you tonight, please, if you decide against funding this, give us some direction so we can go forward and do what you've charged us to do, which is give you some answers. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Pat.
Mike Sinello, please.
Is everyone able to follow along? Thank you for everybody. All right. So in regards to item 10 on the agenda tonight, let me just start by saying the motion that is on the floor, or was on the floor, depending on how you read chapter 46 of Robert's Rules, is one I would not support, and that I'll offer two motions instead that I would support. One, motion to request for proposal market research as to the definition of need for and desire for a community center as residents of New Milford see fit. Or, two, to quote what was said at the last meeting, motion to request for proposal market research to define the public perception of a community center and what features the public would like included. I'm sure attorney grounds can impine as to whether or not these are actually legal invalid RFPs. For those that haven't seen the videos I produced on the topic, I'll briefly explain the advantages of framing the motion this manner, and then I'll make the case for these motions. For a more comprehensive explanation, for those who have the ability to do so, search for Michael Sinello on Facebook, and the first two videos I posted should do the topic a great deal of service. First, the major advantage of these motions over the one on the floor is that by framing the motion in the manner I have, you preclude the necessity to establish a price and a funding source. This means that you, one, don't reveal your hand to competitive bidders; two, leave on the floor the possibility of getting either a greatly reduced fee or possibly, or the possibility of some, say, startup consulting firm from doing the work in exchange exclusively for the publicity this project would gain them, and a written recommendation; or, three, and, three, you leave on the floor the possibility of discovering a funding source that winds up costing the town nothing at net. For example, you have someone on the books right now in this building whose sole job it is to seek grants for projects of exactly this ilk. You may also, for example, find folks like me who are willing to pledge, in my case, $100 of their own money to voluntarily contribute to the project. For the record, for those who are as confident in their conclusions as I am, and are thus willing to join me in putting their money where their mouth is, I'll be passing around a pledge sheet should the motion pass. Also, it should be noted that since this question has been raised, of course a governing body has the right to raise funds, of course a governing body that has the right to raise funds by force has the right to raise funds through voluntary contributions. We see this with bike donations to the youth agency, with trash can and bench donations to the lindemming project, with direct monetary donations to the library modernization project, and with grants from the private sector for public projects, which happen all the time. Second, the study has value, as it will do the one thing we have not done, which is properly define a community center. To this point, your own town attorney rightly couldn't even provide a vague legal definition of community center. To quickly address one fallacy, you can't know the price of a thing until you know what the thing is. Price is a dependent variable. The thing is the independent variable. We wouldn't pay a dime to get, for example, AIDS, but we would gladly bond tens of millions of dollars at a usurious rate for a billion-dollar check made out to the town of New Milford by Bill Gates. The reason I want this information revealed is because I'm absolutely certain, if it has any validity, that it will only produce one result, which will absolutely vindicate, and I realize it's political suicide to say so, listing the property and gaining millions of dollars in capital that could thus be spent on an enormous list of projects without bonding. But that's not the point. If you agree with me, you want this information revealed. If you don't agree with me, you still want the information revealed, because it would only justify your conclusions on this giant elephant in the room, and it would do so right here and now. And for those still on the fence, this should certainly help bring you closer to a proper conclusion. Perhaps $20,000 is not the appropriate price. And on that matter, I tend to agree. But no matter what side of the aisle you stand on in regards to the long-term plan with Pettybone, you should still be in support of the motions I presented, and you should agree that there is at least some value in obtaining this information. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Tim Latta, please.
Hello, my name is Tim Latta, 66 Cherniski Road. I'm here to talk about the expansion of the bridge on Cherniski Road and to voice my opinion against it. And just a few anecdotes about why. We've lived on Cherniski Road now for 22 years, and we like the fact that it's a scenic road. But even as a scenic road, we have a couple of kids. We get nervous about the traffic already racing through there. We're on kind of a straightaway. One of the only things that slows down traffic at all is the idea that there is a one-lane bridge a little bit further down the road from our house. But over the years, we've kind of told our kids that they can't play kind of even in the side yard of our house. We're one of the closest houses to the road. Our front door is about 20 feet from the middle of the road. And so already, we're pretty close, but we've taken that extra precaution to tell them that they can't play anywhere, even on the side yard. Because already, in the time we've lived there, three cars have come off that road that were racing down the straightaway, one passing another car with the double yellow line. Three of them have ended up going through our mailbox, through our plantings, landing on our stone wall, and one of them into our side yard. My son has to take the bus right there at the corner of Frenchman's and Cherniski. His bus driver gets angry at him because he will not cross the road if he sees a car coming or hears a car coming at all. So his bus driver gets angry and says, "Just come on." He doesn't do it, because cars will race around the stop buses on Cherniski Road, because they don't see them right away. They come up over the hill there, and then they just are racing down the road. So for me, it's really a safety issue. We love the fact that it's a scenic road, and we like the fact that there aren't big 18-wheeler trucks coming through there on a regular basis. But the main issue for us is a real safety issue, and that's something that I wanted to talk about and voice my concern. And I would love to keep the bridge the way it is, just to maintain that little bit of safety that we have, that buffer zone.
Thanks. All right. Thanks. Adrianne Eriquio, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Town Council. Here with me, I'm going to read these, because I don't have a good memory. To the Town Council, we understand there's a proposal to be put forward this evening regarding the alteration of the Cherniski Road Bridge. As you know, Cherniski Road is a designated scenic road by ordinance, and Chapter 17A of the Scenic Road Preservation Ordinance reads, "The scenic and rural roads of New Milford are cherished and irreplaceable resources essential to the preservation of New Milford's rural heritage. The scenic values of some rural roads in New Milford have been destroyed or are in danger of destruction because of past or potential alterations to their right-of-way. Such alterations have had and could continue to have an adverse impact on the quality of New Milford's aesthetic and historic environment, an environment that is of great benefit to residents and residents alike. Connecticut General Statute, Section 7-149A, found that the preservation and protection of the scenic or historic values of rural roads is essential to the welfare of the people of Connecticut. It is a purpose of this chapter to balance the need to preserve the scenic and rural values of these roads with the need to keep them in good and sufficient repair and passable condition. We'd like to bring to your attention that any alteration of a scenic road must adhere to the ordinance, Section F. The alteration or improvement of a designated scenic road shall be determined by the Town Council. Any proposal for alteration or improvement, whether by public or private applicant, shall be submitted to the Town Council, along with a suitable map showing in detail the proposed alteration or improvement. At its next, next regularly scheduled meeting, not tonight, next regularly scheduled meeting after submission of the proposal, the Town Council shall refer the proposal to the Planning Commission, and then the mayor, with the approval of the Council, shall pursue it to charter, appoint a committee to advise the Town Council on the alterations or improvements being proposed, and any alternative solutions." And you'll find in those ordinances the instructions for how the committee is supposed to be made up. The rules for appointing this committee must follow those set forth in the ordinance. Speaking tonight for the landowners of Cherniski Road who are opposed to the two-lane bridge proposed by Public Works, we want to make you aware that unless you follow the ordinance procedures, we are prepared to seek legal counsel to enforce this ordinance. Now, I'm going to read my own letter, because I feel this is important to give you the background of what's been going on. Residents of Cherniski Road have met with Public Works or the Town Engineer three times, beginning January 31, 2018. We also met with the Roads Committee on July 17. At the first meeting, the Town Engineer was open to our suggestions and concerns about keeping the bridge one-lane. He said it was possible to do that and understood our complaints about the high speeds and increasing traffic of cars and trucks. He saw it firsthand as he stood by the bridge with us. Cherniski Road's one-lane bridge at the bottom of a hill slows down the traffic. Mr. Stanton has only been able to document one accident on the bridge while there have been other accidents to the west and the east of the bridge over the years. We learned this at the November 14 meeting, which I believe you were there, Mr. Bass. Google Maps is now enabling 18-wheeler trucks to travel this narrow, winding road. They are getting stuck on hairpin turns on Barker and also on the other side of Cherniski. These are not revealed by Google, so the truck drivers have no idea. I've been stuck behind the trucks and had to wait 15 minutes while they did a 20-point turn to get out of the hairpin turns. This is also happening on nearby Findley Road in Washington, as confirmed by the first selectman, Mr. Lyons. The Public Works Director has told us things that do not fit with the facts provided by the State of Connecticut Division of Bridges. The state says this road, Cherniski, appears on a state map of minor collector roads, minor, but that does not overrule the scenic road ordinance, nor does it mean that the bridge must become a two-lane bridge. There is no state funding for the Cherniski Road Bridge, none. This bridge is not even on CTDOT's list, and therefore, there are no state guidelines that oversee the design of this bridge, contrary to what we were told by the Public Works Director and the Town Engineer at the second meeting on the bridge this summer. The State Division of Bridges was appalled, and I'm not kidding when they said they were appalled.
Adrianne, you have one minute, please.
These town employees' unwillingness to consider our concerns is what appalled them. The state said Public Works should listen to and work with us for a mutually agreeable solution. They said there's no reason why this cannot remain a one-lane bridge. At the November 14 meeting, which included Mayor Bass, Public Works Zarba, Town Engineer Stanton, and the engineer hired to design the bridge, Mr. Zarba said he had other plans for this road, but would not divulge what those plans were. Some people suspect he's trying to do an east-west connector, which we are totally opposed to. And so is the town of Kent, and so is the town of Washington. The Town Council member, Michael Gold, lives across the street from another bridge, the one at West Meeting House and Mariel Road. That's been withdrawn for redesign, but Mr. Zarba would not tell us why. With all due respect, Mr. Gold, we agree with you, it was a terrible design. I'm glad it's been withdrawn. It was dangerous. So why are bridges being rushed when many people are not satisfied with the designs or with Public Works' refusal to listen to us? Are safety considerations being overlooked? And if so, that's a recipe for disaster down the road. So I hope you carefully consider what's going on with all the money that's been bonded for these bridges, because if you do them wrong, everyone's going to suffer. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Adrianne.
Adrianne, do you have that, so we can refer to that later when we want questions?
I gave it to the secretary.
Thank you.
Which one are you referring to?
The letter, hold on. The letter, not the ordinance. Do you have a letter as well?
The letters?
Yeah. I wanted to take pictures.
And there's letters from two other residents. Thank you.
Thanks, Adrianne.
Thank you.
Good evening. James Furlough, 69 Hilltop View Road. I'm also chief of Waterwich Hose Company Number Two. I'm going to talk to you very briefly about the alarm ordinance. There was, I believe, some misinformation in the newspaper the other day. The fire department does not put anybody on a no-call list. We respond to all calls. And that has been corrected in the alarm ordinance that's coming before you, as it was requested from the fire department and requested by this group. But most important, this alarm ordinance is a compliance tool that we use. We do not use it to collect money. We do not collect a lot of money with this. It's been in place for many years, and we've probably collected less than $500 on the thing. What it does do, it gives us a structure upon which we could potentially find people, and once they get to that point, they can then come forward and spend the money on correcting the problem other than giving it to the town. We're looking at getting compliance with this. In a 2016 article out called "The Unwanted Conundrum" about smoke detectors and things like that, there's two different points in there. One says there's a lack of urgency upon the part of the owners to maintain their systems. And a second quote coming out of that is, "When the fire department makes them fix it, that's when they will fix it." Those are why we have the ordinance in place. The alarm ordinance was originally put in place because we were running into a problem with a property owner. It says, "You have no right to tell me to fix my alarm system and continue to go off." That was many years ago. This particular alarm ordinance has worked very well. And also in the alarm ordinance is, it specifically refers to a report by the fire officer or police officer in it. So it gives the fire departments the ability to pick and choose which ones we find annoyance alarms or non-annoyance alarms by the people that are actually going out to these alarms. And I would like to thank you very much for listening to me. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Thank you, Adrianne. Joe Q., please, 87 Boardman.
Good evening, everyone. Joe Coronte, 87 Boardman Road. I wanted to talk to you about a couple of things tonight, but most importantly, I brought Santa a new hat, because he wasn't wearing his hat. It's kind of stuff being here, so. Kind of off on his side.
Got a button on?
Merry Christmas.
I'm not sure what list I'm going to put you on.
I wanted to talk to you about a couple of things. First thing I want to talk to you about, just press the button again. As tree warden of the town of New Milford, I'm pleased to announce that we have marked 130 trees since the turn of the budget on July 31st, all of which those trees have been cut, and they've been cut in a very timely manner. The assistant tree warden myself are currently out continuing to mark trees, and I think at this point, really, the only thing that stuns us is finances. So we've done just about everything that we can possibly do with the money that we have. We have a system in place now that seems to be working very well. With collaboration with the Department of Public Works and the mayor, we utilize a program called Cartograph. The trees come in to DPW, their main office. They're assigned a number, and they're entered into the computer, and then those trees are able to be tracked and their progress noted, right down to the removal of the tree and the contractor that removed them. So trees have made significant progress, so I thought you'd be happy to hear that. Secondly, I'm here tonight as a taxpayer to support the $25,000 for the fire department, putting their $25,000 back into the capital expenditure, the budget for their trucks. I've been involved in the fire service, and I know how difficult it is to maintain those trucks and the expenses that are incurred, and the NFPA and ANSI regulations that go along with that maintenance and replacement of trucks. So I support that $25,000 going back to the fire department, if in fact, we can afford that. Last but not least, and don't quote me on the exact amount, if it's $20,000 or $18,002, whatever it is, the number that the John Pettybone Community Center Committee, is that right? Okay? Has requested for a survey, okay? And I cringe on the fact that every time we talk about something, we have to spend another $20,000 or $30,000 or $50,000 for a survey, okay? But it's obviously a hot topic, and the individuals that we put on that committee feel as though that's something that they need to make accurate decisions and to, you know, let the public understand which direction we should head, then I support it. I'd like to add to that, that once all of the facts have been generated, embedded, that I'd like to see it go to public referendum. I thought that the way that the library was handled was great. I commend the committee for that, the commission here. I supported the library, and I thought that the process was great, and I haven't heard a single complaint since. It passed with flying colors, and I thought that was good. Other than that, happy holidays. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Joe. Jeff McBride, please.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Jeff McBride, 288 Kent Road. I'm hoping the timekeeper will allow me enough time to read this without having to rush through it. I respect Mrs. Erickson's concerns about the community center and the $20,000 they may need to do the study. And if they don't get it, then they can research it and try to figure it out their own way. But from my point of view, we do not need the community center now. We got to figure out where we're getting money to pay for the school roofs for the high school and John Serenoble Intermediate School, as well as new boilers for the Lilis Building, and continued roadwork, and numerous other things, such as the fire department asking for more money that is not budgeted, which are absolute necessities. When you think of the money for this study is going to come from, there is no money tree farm in the back of this town hall. We have lived without a community center for decades, and a while longer will not make the difference, if we even need it. If it was up to me, I would say, "To heck with the community center." See, we cannot continue down the road like this so the liberals in town can continue to promote their things that need to be on the back burner. This is the old democratic way of getting things done. Approved useless stuff has put the serious stuff on the back burner for years. Wake up, please. Open your eyes, look around, and see all the stuff that was left on the table by the far-left dysfunctional and out-of-tush liberals in the past administration. Look at the money we're going to have to spend because the former administration fired the contractor for century brass cleanup, and we are left with a monumental mess that is present in litigation, and there has been millions wasted on this already, and many more thousands will be spent before this is over. And if the town loses in court, then we are talking millions. There was $250,000 just approved at the last meeting, and comes from the reserve fund. And this aggravates me. This is a waste management fund, and we shouldn't be touching this, period. There's no need for this to have to have happened. It's a previous administration's, and I'm going back farther than the last administration. If this would have been nipped in the bud then, okay, and the right steps taken, we wouldn't be wasting this $250,000 that went to executive decision last meeting. This is a gross waste of taxpayer money, from my perspective. It was approved at the last meeting, it came from the reserve fund, and this is robbing the people of this town. If you folks fast this community center issue, which comes from a committee that is not doing what they were told when it was created. They were instructed by the mayor to do a study and give their final results to the Town Council, and they are doing the exact opposite here. And if you allow this to happen without knowing where the money is coming from, then you have let the taxpayer down, and I'll waste my vote and my confidence in all of you. This committee was to evaluate the future of JPS and not create more headaches for all of us. You are not doing your job in the best interest of the people anymore if you continue this way and allow the committee to control you. We have attorneys, and we have the knowledge within the town to do our own study, and if you can't see that, then you're not doing research, and again, you're not doing the job you got elected to do, and again, failing the people of New Milford. Like I said, we already spent $250,000 for legal fees by the century brass issue. You people need to wake up and look beyond your nose. Look at the millions and millions we'll need to catch up on roads because the previous administrations didn't nip it in the bud. And the last administration denied DPW $2.2 million for two years to work on the roads, and now we're in a bonnet situation, wasting money, nothing, and the taxpayers, we have to feel the brunt of this stupidity. All the while, bowing down to, like, the Board of Education and giving them 60-plus million dollars a year for the last three years and driving taxes up. Where the heck do folks think that the taxpayer is going to degenerate their money from? Again, is the money tree in their backyard as well? You folks really need to take a hard, hard look at the last several Board of Education requests and see the monumental percent increases that the Town Council has allowed because research was not properly done. Now, since you have not done the work, I will be giving you some examples of where the Board of Education has taken the town and the taxpayers to the bank and back in the upcoming weeks ahead. I do not want to see another budget passed or money spent foolishly in this town until all the facts are in and the Board of Education and issues presented to you are necessary and the Board of Education's request researched. to you are necessary, and the Board of Education's request, research, and wise decisions made. We need to put them on the back burner pedestal, made to answer for their monumental increases, and have proper justification. We have to stop the useless and needless waste of taxpayer money. This is going to drive me and my family to leave this town if you continue the way of this land, because I can't afford it anymore. My mortgage and my homeowner's insurance and my property taxes are more than my social security that I get now. I can't live that way any longer in this town. I don't believe I can. So please take all of this into serious consideration. I'm asking you, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Guy Peterson, please.
Good evening, council members and mayor. My name is Guy Peterson. I live at three Cherniski Road. I used to come to these meetings on a fairly regular basis. Not so much in the last ten years or so. Some of the same subjects are still there. I'm very proud of Maryall. We've done a lot to keep it as a rural part of town. I have a garden out in the front of my house, a perennial garden, and people stop there during the summer, I guess, every weekend, and say, "Thanks for, thanks for doing that," because it makes it a, it makes it a better day. We've tried to keep that part of town in a, in a more or less rural way. We haven't stopped development. There have been houses put up here and there that fortunately mostly blend into things. But we've also protected a lot of land for other people in town, in the state, in the region to enjoy, and they do. One of the things about Cherniski Road that helps to keep it that way is that it was designated as a scenic road when the ordinance was first established in town. I was involved, as was my wife and others, in trying to really push for the scenic road ordinance to be adopted. At the time, one of the things that happened, which was really, I think, a very sad moment in the history of our town, at least in my history of the town, Walter Rogg was representing us in, in the legislature, and Walter went to the committee that was responsible for the enabling scenic road law in Hartford. And because of one of the provisions in our scenic road ordinance, which certain people didn't like, he tried to get that committee to eviscerate the state's scenic road provisions. He was, he was golded by Paul Alter-Matt, he was golded by some other people. It didn't happen. So our scenic road ordinance is as it was. I learned recently that, in addition to the bridge being an issue, that there was gonna be a look at the scenic road ordinance. I plead with you, please, not to try to fiddle around with something that has lasted all these years. I mean, the town, recognize that town has not been generous to the scenic road ordinance because scenic roads have been widened without approval. Barker Road is one of them, Cherniski Road is another, but there have been others, too. Now, we really, we really do regard that part of town as our home, our, it's the place we love to live, and we'd rather not have the sixteen, eighteen-wheelers going through. We don't need a bigger bridge. We hope that you'll, you'll really give consideration, not to just the notion of trying to get the big east-west connector. As observed before, Kent doesn't want that, Washington doesn't want that. We have a responsibility to our neighboring towns. We have a responsibility to the people in, in that part of town. And I really urge you to listen to what we say, to try to work with us. When I went to the meeting, the information meeting recently, that Mayor Bass was good enough to establish, to plan, to organize. It was clear, there was no question, that the Public Works Director had made his mind up that one road, one-lane bridge was just not something that was possible. I think it's probably possible if we keep open minds. I think it can be a safe one-lane bridge. In fact, that, that bridge does slow traffic down in a way that is necessary. The speed limit's up there at thirty, thirty-five, and cars are going through there at fifty-five, sixty. I mean, it's, it's really not a good situation. So please be very careful with how you handle this and what we do in the future, and, and please let us know ahead of time. I mean, the agenda said something about action. I certainly hope you're not gonna plan to take any action tonight, because we don't know what that action would be. So please give us as much notice as you can. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that's the end of the list.
Thank you, Walter. Next, moving on to Mayor's remarks. So first, I hope that those who celebrate at Hanukkah had a blessed festival of lights. I'd also like to congratulate our seventy-year New Milford resident, Olive Friedman, who turned one-hundred years old today. I was able to wish her a happy birthday today. Also, as at the last Board of Education meeting, and it was wonderful to see that we have a 2019 Merit Scholar, and his name is Sean Murphy. And Mr. Murphy did quite an outstanding thing. One-point-five million students participate in this, and only thirty-five thousand reach this status. So congratulations to Mr. Murphy. I'd also like to congratulate, staying kinda on the high school, I'd also like to congratulate the New Milford High School Dramatics Club for their game of tiaras that I happened to see on Friday night. It was outstanding. We have a lot of talent in that school, and I think that's wonderful. I'd also like to congratulate a couple of new businesses that opened in town. The first one being the New Delhi Country Store, which is up in Galardsville. It used to be the Galardsville Country Store. Bob and his son Hakim have opened it up. They've done some remodeling. They make a very good breakfast sandwich, I can tell you that, and we wish them well. Also, Mr. Brian Shanks opened up A and B Sports Cards Memorabilia and Collectibles on Danbury Road, which is next to the Ski House. I'd like to thank Mr. Shanks and his family for their investment in New Milford as well. I'd also like to congratulate our Board of Ed member, Angie Chastain. She ended up being a winner from the United Way Hometown Hero. And what she did is she was an integral part in our breakfast and lunch program in the summer, our summer program to help those children that could not afford it. So we thank Angie and all the volunteers for doing that wonderful endeavor, and she's actually continuing to do that, so we thank her and all the volunteers. I'd also like to thank Ryan Fenella, as he was also named the Emerging Hero. He's done a lot of wonderful things in the high school, as well as through his church, and we thank him for that. I'd also like to congratulate Liam Lacy, who received the DAR 2018 Good Citizen Award, and what he does is his commitment to the high school and to our community. So it's wonderful to see all of these young people, and also Olive, that have done wonderful things for our town, so congratulations to them. For those of you that drive down Railroad Street and Bennett Street, you'll see a Christmas tree there. It's lit up, and that was sponsored by the Holland Family Foundation, so we'd love to thank them for that, as we continue on our improvements in the downtown and in the area. I'd also like to thank, for the beautiful Christmas tree that's by Veterans Bridge. We had an anonymous donor donate that and put it up, so I'd like to thank that person for that. I'd also like to thank Mr. Mullen for the lights. And I'd also like to thank Pat and Mike Erickson, Andy Cozo, Laura Flake for putting up the tree, and Joe Coronto for putting a star on the tree. So it's a beautiful tree for all of us to enjoy, so thank you. On our roads, we are continuing to look to complete the punch lists on items on Sega Road, Littlefield, and Carmen Hill One. We're continuing to work that weather permitting. We're also looking to put up guardrails on Long Mountain Road, weather permitting. Mill Street Bridge, for those that don't know, is open to the public. We still have a couple of punch list items to do there, but you can travel on that road. Right now, we're working on next year's road program with the Department of Public Works, with our Roads Committee, with an emphasis on engineering the roads this winter for spring groundbreaking. Our pothole machine is due to come in in January and February. This pothole machine will create efficiencies and make for better repair of the pothole, so we're excited about that. We've also received our new eleven-point-five-foot deck mower and our sixty-one-inch turn mower for our park and recs, employed workforce that sorely needed these, as these, this equipment was over twenty years old and happened to break down quite a bit. Also, Dan Calhoun had told us the Ventrack blower that they've been using has been outstanding. It's helped them with time efficiency and everything else. We also use that to blow the riverwalk that was needed to be cleaned two to three times a year. Also, another thing, too, as it was brought forward today, is I had a meeting in November concerning bridges, a meeting with the public. One we're gonna be talking about tonight, and that's Cherniski Road. That road is a scenic road, and we'll be talking about what needs to get done on that scenic road. And one of the things is by the charter, is to set up a committee, and that's the committee that I'm gonna be talking about tonight. It's composed of a council member, myself, a couple of members from the public, and I'll talk a little bit more about what that is. I think the people should be heard, as it's their neighborhood, and we're gonna do what we can to do the best product we can for our residents, and especially for our neighbors that live on that road. And we'll talk more about that as we move forward. I'd also like to let the town know that we're implementing our Unified Town Fleet Management System. And what that is, is the management system will be able to track all of our vehicles. We have, currently, we had three different fleet managements all in one. We've met with our department heads, and we're actually going to one that will encompass all of the vehicles. It can tell us mileage, can tell us when we need to do maintenance on the vehicles. It has geo-fencing. One of the things that Verizon said it would give us a twenty percent lift in our costs. Also, it's gonna save us approximately nine hundred dollars a month with all of it together. Next, I'd like to thank the town council, the Board of Education, the Board of Finance, for the unanimous approval of the memorandum of understanding to migrate the health insurance to the Connecticut State Plan. This will provide two-point-five mil, approximately two-point-five million in cost avoidance in next year's budget. And what that means is, if we did not go, we'd have to budget an additional two-point-five million dollars into our health insurance for our budget to stay on the same plan we have now. The town side will save seven, approximately over seven-hundred thousand dollars from this year's budget, with significant savings. So I applaud all of the boards to do unanimous decision, so I thank them for that. We continue to work with our Board of Education partners in planning for capital repairs throughout the town and its infrastructure. We will be looking at permanent repair of the high school roof and Sarah Noble roof, as well as town hall. These are repairs that need to get done. We're also gonna be looking at other things that we can jointly, jointly purchase as well. Some of the things that we're doing now is we're doing our oil tanks that we're doing this year, and I'll expound on that more in our January meeting. We are beginning the process of our library expansion project that was approved by the voters at referendum, so I thank the voters. We'll be meeting with the Library Committee, the Finance Director, on the next steps of this project, and then I'll update the council at the January meeting. We are beginning our 2019-2020 budget process. With this in mind, I will be asking for a joint meeting of the Town Council, Board of Finance, and Board of Education to look at revenues, debt, and capital so that we can properly plan for the 2019-20 budget and beyond. The New Milford CERT team, which is our town's primary volunteer response for staffing and operating emergency shelters when needed, had an overnight shelter drill on November thirtieth, through Saturday, December first. I thank them for doing that endeavor as we begin our plans for our emergency operations. We've been planning this year and also last year any things for emergency instances within the schools, to snow days, to extreme cold, to extreme heat, and I'm proud of working with our emergency operations center, which includes fire, police, ambulance, hospital, and our emergency services team, so I thank them for that. I'd also like to thank our town department heads and our employees as we continue to look for ways to drive efficiencies and provide services to our wonderful town. This is something that's ongoing, and we're gonna continue to do every day and every month for you, the taxpayer. Lastly, at our last town council meeting, there was a motion to approve the request for the community center's request for eighteen thousand dollars for a survey. After much debate, including where to fund the survey from, there was a vote, a four-to-four tie. I then tabled the motions for concerning of the following. We were informed at our town council meeting that we needed to fund an additional two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for our other legal line. With this expenditure, that depleted our fund, our unassigned fund for this year. I thought, and still do, we needed time to see where we could get the funding for this purpose, as these budgetary items are not in the budget. I thought that we could postpone the item as a postpone definitely, which is per Robert's rules. I did make a mistake, though, and I fully want to apologize to the town council and you, the public. Postponing indefinitely needs to come from the floor and be voted by, by the floor. For that, I made a mistake, so I apologize to you guys. I did put this motion back on the floor tonight so that we could talk about it and vote at it. Lastly, I'd like to, I would like and wanna wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a blessed Happy New Year. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Agenda item four, the consent agenda. Move the council to approve all the items for A and B.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item five, move for the appointment or reappointment of boards and commissions and committees as listed under Library Board of Trustees, Municipal Road Committee, and Ethics Committee.
One question. There's one date that's different than the others.
Right.
Charlie Lukavas.
On the roads? Yeah, I noticed that. Is that a typographical?
No, it's not. The four members have numbers that go to 2022, three have that go to 2020.
Okay, so that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item six, move for the town council to enter into executive session for item A, which is the New Milford Police Department Officers' Collective Bargaining Agreement, including recent negotiation relating to this agreement, and we invite in Personnel Director Belero, Attorney Ken Taylor, and Attorney Matt Grimes.
One second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Chief Surrill, please, too.
Yep, Chief Surrill is here as well.
And we have item, yeah, I know. And we have item B in executive session, which is offers for purchase of municipal property. For that, we will need Mike Zarba, Department of Public Works, and Matt Grimes.
That'll be after.
Mike Zarba's not here, so it's against me.
It's right there.
This hand goes up?
So I'd like to move that we return to regular session and note that there were no votes, no motions were made and no votes were taken during the executive session. One second to return.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item seven, public hearings. Move to approve the amendment to Chapter Two-A alarms to the Code of Ordinances and resume the public hearing at six-thirty PM on January fourteenth, 2019.
One second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item seven-B, move to approve the amendment to Chapter Five-B, Article Three. Item 7B, uh, move to approve the amendment to Chapter 5B, Article 3, Inspection Fees, to the Code of Ordinances, and resume the public hearing at 6:30 PM on January 14th, 2019.
Any discussion?
Could I, could I go on the record about this one, Mr. Mayor? Because the council had asked us to look into it last time. We spoke about something. We thought that there were, uh, marshal costs, state marshal costs associated with this. There are not, actually. That, that they do not get, they do not require the service of a state marshal. So, the $200-plus cost would be for the mileage, uh, would be for, uh, when there's a police officer, that it's a hostile situation. Most of them are not hostile situations, so this is, uh, instead of a flat 250K, this would be 200, uh, plus whatever the costs are for our, uh, our, uh, fire marshals to go up there.
So, we have a second? Do we have a motion?
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you.
Item 7C, move to approve the repeal of Ordinance Chapter 16, Article 5, Zoning and Commission, from the Code of Ordinances.
Second. This was from our, uh, public hearing this afternoon. Uh, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you.
Item 7D, move to approve the repeal of Ordinance Chapter 2, Article 6, Alternates to the Board of Finance from the Code of Ordinances.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you.
Item 7E, move to approve the repeal of Ordinance Chapter 2, Article 17, uh, Statute 2-Dash-1-Six-One, Membership from the Code of Ordinances.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you.
Uh, Item 8, Discussion and Possible Action on the Following Job Descriptions. Start with A, and so someone, is Greg Valero here to talk about this? Yes, can I just? Excuse me a minute, Greg. Um, Mayor, we'd like to, uh, I guess, suspend the rules to go to executive session on this. We have a couple of questions.
Make a motion to, uh, add another executive session to the agenda, or?
I don't have to suspend anything. I moved add another executive session, um, to our agenda. Item 8, uh, item, hold on, what's the last one? Item 14?
Item 8.
8 is what we're on. Well, and then I'm going to ask to move it up, but I can't insert it here, can I?
You can amend, you can amend the item on the agenda.
All right, that's what I'll do. I'd like to amend the Item 8 on the agenda and go to executive session.
Second.
Please stand invited into executive session.
Personnel Director, HR Director, Mr. Valero.
You're just adding it at the moment, then you have to actually do it.
I can't hear you.
You're just adding it at the moment.
That's what I was doing, yes.
I'm not going in yet, right, so you're adding it to go into it.
Right now, we're just talking to, uh, vote on amending to go to executive session.
You have a moment to make a decision on the agenda, so that's your.
Okay? Do we have a second?
Is that all, is it all good now?
Okay, do I have a second? Do we vote on it?
Any, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed?
And we'd like to have, uh...
Walter and Dr. Moons.
Now you have to vote to go into it.
Yes, right, so...
Do we have to go into it now?
I moved to enter into executive session.
Tom had a question.
Yes.
Do we do it now, or can we do it at the end and go through the rest of the agenda? What will you, what is the pleasure of the council?
Sure. I was going to make it Item 14, but everybody wanted to make it Item 8, so I'll put it back to Item 14, then. How's that? Yeah, it's okay. I got up early this morning. Okay, so, uh, we, I'll, uh, withdraw my, uh, motion to go to executive session, but I will ask that we, um, make the, can I do that, Matt? Can I just change the number? Or do I have to withdraw what I said?
Technically, you should put George, you said, do the motion again, but you just pass it to Asari.
I'm what?
You just pass it to, uh, I...
Yes, but I'd like to make it Item 14, so we can move ahead.
So, make the motion.
Yeah, I'm going to with, I can withdraw my motion completely?
Without objection, without objection, that we have board, it can be through.
Okay, so, it's going to be Item 14.
Perfect.
All right?
Okay. Let's go to 9.
Item 9, Fire Department, uh, motion to approve the Fire Chief's request to restore funding of $25,000 to the Fire Apparatus Expenditure Account.
Any discussion? Chief?
Good evening, I'm James Furlough. I'm the Fire Chief of Water Witch House Company Number 2. With me tonight, Alan Harris, with Northville, Chief of Northville Fire Department, and Dave Williamson, who is Chief of Galerisville Fire Department. Um, the three volunteer fire departments are requesting the restoration of $25,000 to the capital expenditure account. Um, the 10% reduction to this account in the 2018-2019 budget has had an impact to the replacement need of the fire apparatus. Uh, the officers and members of the town, fire services, would like to take the opportunity to discuss this with the Town Council, um, a bit of history on this. The discussion about the annual budget, or the purchase of replacement of fire apparatus actually originated back in, um, 1979, following the 1979 Mill Street Fire, Middle Street Fire. Prior to and subsequent to that fire, several requests from the fire departments were made to purchase a new quick-response vehicle, uh, which were not acted upon by this board of selectmen at that time for several years. The three fire companies, uh, got together and devised a program to develop a Fire Apparatus Capital Expenditure Account. This account is to purchase fire apparatus and replace aging equipment by creating a yearly stipend from the town. This in turn avoided continuous requests for funding of one or more fire apparatus each year at a greater cost than the stipend that was to be set aside. The town's annual contribution to this fund was established in November of 1983, was $150,000. This annual contribution did not change for 31 years. Although the cost of fire appar, apparatus more than doubled, the collective apparatus replacement plan has worked by supplemental funding from donations and grants, refurbishing existing apparatus, and replacing only the equipment that needed to be replaced. Even with those strategies in place, the fire departments found the need to address the future of the existing apparatus we have. In 2014, a funding increase request to $250,000 was made to prove by the Town Council. This amount has been adopted in the subsequent, uh, annual budget since year 2014. The fire departments felt necessary to review an entire rotation of the fire service apparatus that we have to give a better representation of what this request is. The fire department utilizes this plan, it's a five-year capital plan, and they make revisions as needed. The three departments meet every year to address apparatus needs. It is important to note that the fire engines are in service for approximately 25 years, while tankers and rescue trucks are in service for about 30 years, and brush trucks a few years longer than that. It has been found that by buying quality apparatus and requiring proper maintenance allows for our current fleet to meet these anticipated timeframes. The tower ladder has never been incorporated as part of this, uh, group. So, let's get, uh, introduce you to our capital account and our fleet. Okay, as I said, we are requesting for reinstatement of capital funds. Uh, all of you have received this power program, uh, through the email. Our capital budget worksheets back and forth together. These are the comparisons. The one on the left is the, uh, capital budget that we originally handed in in 2014. We decided to go back a few years, so you look at how we, uh, deal with this. And with this, the, and then the one on the right is a capital budget worksheet that's minus the 25K. A couple of things to point out with this, find my pointer, is if you look at the lines in the 2021 budget, um, without the, um, 25K that we currently have, two years from now, we go into deficit spending, and that is a concern that we have as the three chiefs here. Um, if you take a look at the other side, we don't go into deficit spending, uh, until a little over 10 years out, or 11 years out. Uh, too far, right here. So, the red are indicating where we go into the negative. Um, so, that is a concern that we have, is then we will have to completely revamp our budgeting system because we will potentially be, uh, in the red significantly sooner, even though it's only 25,000. Um, we keep a very tight budget. Um, the top four lines that are green are all apparatus that have currently been replaced and are in service. The one that's in gold is a one that had just, um, has been, the contract has been signed on. We will have that truck probably in November of next year, uh, as well as the ladder truck. So, we're keeping rolling on these, but we do with the capital budget worksheet, we take this very seriously as our five-year capital plan, and we work off the monies that we have, uh, and the anticipation of, of what we can do with these monies. The apparatus themselves. Engine 26, which is a pumper light rescue. This is a Class A pumper. Um, it has a 1,500 GPM pumper in the middle. This is also a light rescue, which means it also has what we call E-tools or E-extrication hearse tools on it. Um, this was placed in service in 2014. This is a six-man cab, so it, it, uh, has a driver, an officer, and then four firefighters in back that are able to, uh, get dressed and be ready to roll and step off the truck with air pack, with all their gear, ready to go. Uh, so this is particularly a street truck. The next truck we have is Rescue 45. I'll turn this over to Chief Williamson.
All right, this is our newest one up in Galerisville. It's a mini rescue, all right? We have the stock drivers that come through. Um, we have a lot of kayakers, stuff like that. All our water rescue stuff on there. Um, we had a trailer before that had Hazard's Containment Response and kayaks in it. We've incorporated that all-in-one vehicles. We only get, need to get one vehicle out without a trailer trying to get all in there. It's got all high-end rope, uh, rescue equipment in it, any land searches, anything like that. This is what we're going. It has the capability to own our quad and, uh, everything else, so, just one of our, our fleet there. Anybody have some question on it?
Okay, this is, uh, Northville's Engine 104. This is our, our newest pumper, which, uh, came in last, uh, December. This is a, our first six-man cab, which enables us to put more people on the scene with less traffic congestion. It's got a 2,000-gallon pump, it's got 1,000 gallons of water, it's our main attack pumper. It also has a rescue tool system in the back to, uh, supplement our, our heavy rescue. Next up, this is one that's being replaced right now. It is currently under contract. This is Engine 27. It is a straightforward pumper. This is a smaller machine. This is a two-person cab. Um, this particular engine is a first-due engine and a supply engine. Um, this is for, so we can get into places like lake clubs, tight driveways, et cetera. It is an attack engine, uh, but it also, it only has 1,000 gallons on a water on it, so when we go there, we need to supplement this with tankers or our other equipment if we do have a structured fire. When we end up going to a structured fire, we don't bring one tanker, we're bringing the five that the town of the Milford has. Um, they are portable hydrants to us, and we need that water. In addition to that, we sometimes call in a tanker task force and/or mutual aid to supplement that. So, we do go outside of our town to get to mutual aid.
Uh, this is a 1990 tanker, um, 3,000 gallons of water, 1,000 gallon minute pump. If one of our pumpers go out of service, we designed this so that it could be an attack pumper secondary, so it kind of does dual purpose. Galerisville has two fire hydrants in it. They're located in the extreme southern part of our district of Twin Oaks. That's it. Everything else is water on wheels, or pulling out of a stream. So, last structured fire we had, we had all five tankers from it over in town, Sherman, Ken, and a crew from the state coming over. So, this is just one of the things. That right now, uh, that's been, uh, replaced in 1920 at 30 years old. It's close to 60,000 pounds, and you're like, going down the road, 30-year-old equipment. Just keep that stuff in mind.
How many miles does that have, huh?
Off the top of my head, I, I couldn't tell you. Somewhere probably around 20,000, somewhere around there. Um, mileage isn't a huge thing with us. Um, every time it goes in the pump, it's adding mileage on, whether it's driving down the road or not, it's still, the hours of pump use count towards mileage on these trucks, so it's, it's...
So, how many hours of pump use it should have?
Without going back to my records, I, I couldn't tell you. Tankers tend not to get a lot of, of pump hours because they're shuttling back and forth. We have supply trucks that fill them.
Rescue 22, this is a heavy rescue out of water, uh, based out of Water Witch. Um, this has, uh, again, our complement of rope rescue, uh, all sorts of different tools on it. This is a rolling toolbox for us. Uh, it also has, uh, drawers of light, it also has the, uh, all of our airbag systems on this, so if we end up with a car underneath the traffic trailer truck, we have the capability of dealing with that scenario that we do have. Um, this will be, um, at age of retirement, 27 years old. Um, so, you know, it, that's where it stands in the list. Brush Truck 23, this is a 1984 brush truck and utility vehicle. Um, this has got a very small pump on the back, but this is to get us out into the middle of the woods. This is a four-wheel-drive vehicle, and we spin the hubs, but this still is a 1984 three-speed, um, vehicle, but, you know, this gets us anywhere we want to go. You put this in low gear, as long as you don't have trees in your way, you can get to just about anywhere. Uh, it's a very good truck. We like keeping this one, but as you can imagine, right about now, transmissions from 1984, um, but most of the carburetors from 1984. It's very hard to get parts to repair these. This will be 38 years old at its anticipated, uh, retirement age.
How many total brush trucks, sorry, Lieutenant, um, how many total brush utility trucks do we have across the town?
Brush trucks, we have four, we have four brush trucks.
And somebody said earlier, five total tankers?
Yes, correct.
How many pumpers?
Two, three, four.
Four.
Two.
Eight.
Yeah, totally.
And rescue?
Mine's, mine's a combination. It's a pumper-rescue.
Okay, so you already counted that?
Yep.
Okay.
Pure heavy rescue, and he has heavy rescue.
Okay, and then there was a little rescue. So, the kayaks?
Yeah, that's a utility.
Okay, so you got it.
It's not a true, it's not a true rescue.
So, two rescue, five tankers, eight pumpers, four brush truck utilities?
Yeah, and, uh, I have a supply pumper, so I don't have a hydra.
Thank you.
This is, uh, Engine 106. It's a 1990, uh, conventional cab fire truck. It's got a 1,500-gallon minute pump, it's got 1,250 gallons of water, um, and about 1,400 feet of five-inch supply line. Uh, actually, this is operating right now at a, this was operating at the condominium fire past the high school about three years ago, feeding the aerial. Um, we refurbished this truck, I believe, in 2014. We spent, uh, I want to say about eighty, $90,000 on it at that time, completely updating. Um, we had to redo all the plumbing, lighting, and, uh, brake system at that point in time to get us another 10, 12 years out of it.
This is where we discuss in our annual meetings whether we refurbish trucks or re, how we utilize trucks. This is a way that we keep our costs down for the betterment of the town. Engine 19, 1999, this again is a small pumper.
So, again, just to kind of ground me, average cost of a tanker?
You're, you, you can be climbing anywhere between 400 to $500,000, depending on drive line and configuration, whether it's a single axle or a tandem axle.
What do we typically buy?
I'm sorry?
What do we typically buy, single or tandem?
We're buying tandem. We're buying, again, typically a single axle tanker is going to be 2,000 gallons or less, 1,800 to 2,000. We're running anywhere from 2,500 to 3,000 gallons.
Gotcha. And then what's, um, an average cost of a new pumper?
Well, uh, Northville's pumper was about 548,000.
Thank you. And rescue?
Rescues can be anywhere from 350 to 450 ballpark.
And brush truck utility trucks?
What are we running, 140? I would say 140 to 160, depending on, again, configuration, chassis, and so forth.
One thing I'd like you to keep in mind with this, when we talk of these numbers, that does not include everything that goes in it.
We talked about that during budget, then you still have to outfit them, correct?
Yes, that doesn't count the hose, the nozzle, the air packs, everything that goes in it.
Understood, yep.
Bear in mind.
Yep.
All right, yeah, this is Engine 19. This is our second, this is Waterwich's second smaller pumper for getting into the lake club areas. Very good backup, it's an attack engine, it's also a very good backup supply truck for when we have larger fires. This can actually supply, it's got a big enough pump to supply either the tanker shuttles and/or the ladder truck. We're looking at a replacement at 26 years old. This is Northville Tanker 103. It's a 2,000 conventional tanker. It's got 2,500 gallons of water. It's got a 500 gallon per minute pump on it. It's a primarily a shuttle truck. Again, our operations are such that we don't have as many hydrants as Galveston, we've got maybe one, maybe two, but we focus on either the Aspetuck, or we have Lake Elafos for water supply, and again, a small pond here and there. We actually, Northville rolls out of firehouse, initial response, two tankers, two engines, we have 7,350 gallons of water. If we can't do it with that, then we're calling the cavalry.
Kate?
Jim, I have just a quick question. You mentioned before that a piece of equipment you used in the lake communities, and you just mentioned it again on another one. And is that, that's because of the tight constraint in the streets, or?
Sometimes the streets, sometimes the driveways, yes. We will bring a six-man cab down in there, but we may not be able to get in as a first due. So we take it upon our, the drivers know where they're going and to take the right truck into the right community. These smaller, single-wheel base trucks can get into people's driveway significantly better. And again, you can use them as they are attack engines, they're ready to go, they just don't have everything else that's on it. You bring that on the next truck that sits them on the road.
And what were the two that you said were good for the lake community use?
There are, well, R19 and R27, because they're a shorter wheelbase truck.
Okay, so those two are able to, are there any others coming up that you, other than those two? Those two do the job in the lake area?
That's correct, yes. We keep those two shorter. And then we have the larger ones that carry more equipment and, you know, have six-man cabs, we can get more people together with those. But sometimes those don't have the wheelbase to be able to get on, so some of these driveways.
Yeah, I know, so, thanks.
Tom? I see you have another, pretty substantial list after this that's probably going to come up. I'd like to just ask the question, why now? I understand that you're looking for 25,000. Why, we're at the middle of the budget year, why not just bring this forward to, in the next budget season, to reinstate these funds as opposed to right now? I mean, are we, is there something critical going on that we don't know that you need, that we need this 25 grand for this month? Or is this something that we could incorporate into the budget cycle?
Want me to handle this one?
Yeah, I can.
Nice and simple. Next month, we meet as a group, and we have to reschedule our five-year plan. We try not to look at potential staff increases or decreases in our budgeting. We'd like to come, to this commission, come up with $250,000, which is what we, you know, came forward with a bunch of years ago to meet this requirement. If we don't have that, then we're looking at potentially a budget deficit within our five-year capital plan. That budget deficit is in, I believe it's 1920 or something like that, which is not this budget year we're looking at, it's the following budget year. That's why we're coming up before this, because we don't want to see an increase of $50,000 next year, and then it also means that we have to go back to the drawing board or redo things. Because we're going to go off of what we, what we have as a known versus what we anticipate.
Paul? So in that, that year, the 2021, we're showing a rescue truck that's 27 years old. You just better understand that the letters saying that the rescue trucks are typically 30 years, the tankers and rescues, and then if you look at the list, the 103, 2001 tanker is only 26 years old, one's getting replaced, the next rescue pumper's 28 years old, the next rescue's 28 years old, if you go down, you know, there's several more. So I guess my question is, if the typical replacement schedule for that 1994 rescue truck's 30 years per year letter, and that one's 27, why are, why are all these replacements about 10% less than what the letter says they should be replaced at?
All right, we have them in the schedule. You know, we try and look at, we can't sit there and go, it has to be 30 years, because we don't know if they're actually going to last that long. But, you know, we try and make them last longer, or as long as we can. We also have to look at what the total fleet is when we look at these.
One of the other things you have to consider when you order one of these, you don't go to a lot and pick it up, it's a year to two build time. So if you're looking for that, it's 26 years old or 28 years old there, and you get it a year and a half later, well, now you're at 29 and a half years of actual use time.
Jim?
Mike? Yeah, it looks like in that year, 2021, that you guys are only going to be $5,000 light. Why not just ask for the five rather than the 25?
I think that the three chiefs sat down, were trying to get back onto the schedule we originally brought forward.
Do you guys have your own money? Each house has its own funds, separate from the 250 that we, that the town gives and supports?
This is the capital budget. This is strictly for apparatus replacement. As far as the additional funding that we do for fundraising and what we do in the other, there's another line item we come in for from each fire department, which is the replacement of all the equipment we put onto these. That's under a totally separate line item. This is strictly for the trucks themselves.
And where does the fire tax go to?
Fire tax goes to New Milford Fire Association, has a limited taxing area, and that goes towards repair of the vehicles, as well as paying for the street lights, paying for the hydrants within the district, various other things associated with the taxing district. We have to maintain, by being part of the taxing district, we have to keep a Class A pumper in the house and available to the district at all times.
Thank you.
Paul?
So our trucks that are sold from our departments, I believe you said the ladder truck probably couldn't be sold because of the conditioning was in, but I know that there are other ones that we've sold gone into service in other departments, maybe not in the state. There were two actually that were posted online where a guy came to the New Milford page and said it was great to see New Milford's trucks getting reused. I forget what state it was in. So the question is, if we're getting rid of the trucks and it's good enough for the other towns that are buying them and using them to refurbishing them, I guess I'm just kind of trying to better understand why we're getting rid of them if it's, if our junk is another town's treasure, so to speak. How is that? There was a welding guy who posted it online.
A welding guy?
Yeah, I forget what state it was, and two of the New Milford trucks were in operation in the fire departments in another state.
I know that we sold, we, when Northville got our new engine, we sold our old engine, because actually, we have more into our, we spent more than we got from the town in terms of equipment on it, hose and stuff, and that was worked into the price when we disposed of our 96 engine. The, a lot of, some of the older stuff, like when Northville sold their old tanker, which was rusting through, I mean, it went to down south where people, they don't have any money, where they'll spend $12,000 on an item, on a truck, because they, again, they, there's certain parts of the country, they don't have any money for apparatus replacement. So it enables us to get rid of, you know, to move stuff along.
There's also actually companies that buy our fire apparatus and send it to South America or Canada, because they're not an NFPA, National Fire Protections, they don't have to meet standards. So if you don't have to meet that standard, you can send that to a place where there is no standard.
So you're saying then, just to be clear, when these 26-year-old trucks are going, we're salvaging them, you're saying they're not, we legally at that point can no longer keep them on the road?
No, we didn't say that.
Oh, well, I'm not understanding that.
There's a standard.
Okay, the NFPA standard.
All right, we can keep them on the road, but it's a liability. When you have a 30-year-old fire truck going down the road and something breaks, and you take out a family in a minivan or something like that, they're going to go to that standard.
I'm not following. So you're saying, if we're not properly maintaining our vehicle, I'm not following. You're saying our 30-year-old vehicles are a larger liability than a 15-year-old vehicle on the road?
Just due to age, yeah.
Even if they're properly maintained?
Anything can happen. The older something gets, the more of a chance something's going to break.
These trucks don't get road miles. They don't have miles on them like we're used to on a commercial vehicle or our cars. They sit there, and they sit, and they age, and then they're used at a high capacity sometimes, and then they're, they sit again. So there's a lot of stresses that occur within a fire truck, in terms of its pump, and its plumbing, and transmissions. Again, you know, the newer trucks, they're safer trucks, they now have airbags in them, they now have better braking systems in them. The newer trucks stop in a way less distance than the older trucks do significantly. They have traction control, electronic stability, just like your cars do. So the trucks change, they get safer, hopefully they're more reliable. And again, you need to be certain, you know, that pump's not going to fail when you're in the midst of a house fire. We do annual pump testing, we do annual hose testing, we do annual VOTs. And these trucks get, these trucks get their oil changed once a year, whether they need it or not, whether they do 100 miles or 2,000 miles. Again, we're just running around town, so there's a lot of, a lot of stress in short-term use.
So it's fair to say then that with their limited usage, they get a higher level of maintenance than a typical vehicle?
We maintain, you know, I'll use this as an example. I had, I had, back in 1999, 2000, I don't know if anybody was on the council then, Chief Mayor probably remembers, in an apparatus accident in front of advanced auto parts. A minivan pulled out, thought that, sorry.
Nice ring though.
It is a good ring.
Very nice ring though.
Thank you for that.
Sorry about that. New phone, I haven't figured how to silence. So anyway, the truck, the truck, this was in good condition, did an evasive maneuver, and ended up upside down in the parking lot of the karate school on the coldest day of the year. Coldest, we had a period of frigid weather, and it turned into a block of ice when it sat outside of our Cadillac. But anyway, state police truck squad came and went through this truck from top to bottom. And not good, everything on it was good. However, again, we tried to, we have good maintenance program, but still, reliability of the, of the units as they get older can diminish. You know, again, we try to buy good stuff that we're going to get a lot of life out of. Again, NFPA, most communities, you know, 20 years on a pumper, and a lot of them are trying to apply, apply that 20-year formula to everything, which we're not doing that. We're, you know, we're trying to get more life out of our tankers, because we buy good tankers, and therefore we can get 25 to 30 years out of them. Now, I know the Galvestons tanker, that's what year is that now?
90.
That's a 90. So that, I mean, that's coming due.
You come up and you look at our stuff, and it's all nice and shiny and looks brand new. That's because we take care of it. After every call, it gets washed. Every time it goes down the road, it gets rinsed from underneath, everything. 3 o'clock in the morning, slushy snowstorm, you're out fighting a fire, you come back, you put everything back together, you're washing, you got to take care of yourself. Because we know, we're trying to stretch it. You know, we're trying to do everything we can to take care of our stuff so that it looks brand new. That's, you know.
Kate?
I just have a question. Yes, I know you take good care of it, always looks great, and I just have a question. How do you, well, first of all, what's the average amount, would you say, that you spend on repairs every year?
Does that include tires or not?
Anything that, you, you know, you said the fire tax goes to the fire association, and you use that for repairs, plus maybe other money. I'm just curious, what approximate, anything that you'd consider a repair? Not the replacement of your packs, that's a, right? But something that's attached to the trucks.
Probably DOT repairs, things like that. I think Waterwich is probably into maybe 80, 100,000 dollars a year, but also understand that that also, that will include the ladder truck at this juncture. There's a lot of repairs on that ladder truck. But there is some maintenance associated with the older trucks that is part of it. And.
Well, what's your annual budget? What do you budget when you're looking at your plan, your five-year plan? What do you put in for repairs? Realizing it's an estimate.
Well, we put in, in our, in Northville's budget, because we're all a little different, they've got the fire association. I want to say last year we had 18,000 and change as a line item in our budget to do tires and maintenance.
And of course, you have three more vehicles in Waterwich. I have counted six for Galveston, six for Northville, and nine for Waterwich. For a total of 21, that's what's listed here.
That's on that list. We have other vehicles that are not on this list, because we have other donations and things like that for apparatus, and we also have two state vehicles with Waterwich.
Well, I'm just going to use this, because that makes it fair across the board. So, all right, so it stands to reason that you would be more than Northville or Galveston. So, okay, that gives me something to go on, but I have a bigger question. How do you figure, or does a town figure, how much equipment you need? Is, I mean, I know we're the largest in area of any town. Is it by the population? Is it a combo of the square miles and population?
There's multiple factors. Response time is one of them.
So for us, that would be a big thing?
That is a big thing. You know, we're, for us to get mutual aid, it's 15 minutes.
Yep. So you have, yeah, and if you need Sherman, if you're on that side of town, but if you're on the other end of town.
Yeah, whatever, depending on how it is.
So is there any set formula for it, or do you, does each town figure it? I mean, because you all have different numbers of volunteers and.
I think we work off of what you need to actually fight a standard fire that we might have. If you're going to a structured fire, you know, I'll separate commercial from residential. You're going to a residential fire, you're talking two attack trucks at the scene immediately, you're talking a supply truck coming out the end of that, you're talking all five tankers if you're in a tanker district, either that, or you're talking one or two more supply trucks if you're in a hydrant district. If you need the ladder truck, then you need ladder truck at its sole source requirement. So no matter how you look at it, we're going to a large structured fire, we're not doing it alone. There's no way we can, even with all the equipment that we have sitting there, we're not doing it alone.
You're calling reinforcements. Okay, so it is a combo, then, of population and square miles?
Square miles.
And where you're located?
And the, and the, and the situation.
And it's a tactical consideration. Okay, in our district, I need, again, pumper in the driveway, pumper at the bottom of the driveway, and I've got to have water.
I want you to have water.
And, and we've got to have water. And again, for tanker to come up, you know, it's, it can be a 15-minute delay. With modern construction, and the way houses are with the fuel loads in a, in a structure today, with all the Bob's gasoline furniture. with all the Bob's gasoline furniture, all that stuff is combustible. You don't have 30 minutes of time to work. You've got maybe 10. And if that 10 minutes or that 15 minutes has elapsed because of your response time, you could be going into unconceivably a very dangerous situation.
One of the things that he didn't account for in the initial response. All right, those two rigs, those are gonna be what you're actually using and pumping. You're gonna be having manpower come in. You need a rapid intervention team. Northville specializes in that. Their fire trucks are gonna roll up. They're gonna have all their equipment, air packs and stuff like that on it. Average for a two-story wood-framed house, two-and-a-half-story wood-framed house, 28 to 38 guys need to be outfitted in full turnout gear with air packs. So my first out pumper has six packs on it. My second out pumper has four packs on it.
So you still got more.
So you still have to have more, you know, they have six-man cabs. I don't have to lug it.
And I just have one last question. I don't wanna delay with this forever, but we have Waterwich, Northville, Gaylordsville. Has there ever been a consideration of another, where you feel there's a deficiency in reaching in time? Is there an area of our town that you can't get to?
I don't think so.
That wasn't specifically addressed when they put in the Lanesville Fire Station.
I wondered about that.
That is why that is down there, is because there was a problem with getting to those areas. But also, in the far-reaching areas, we all have mutual aid agreements.
Right, so if it's me, you come from Sherman, I'm a lot closer to them than I am you.
Correct, but we have one of these, also referred to as automatic mutual aid. Down in Kenwood Lake Club, now that we get called, Brookfield gets cracked.
Okay, I just, I figured that's pretty much what happens in any town.
That's correct.
If that's volunteered. Thank you very much.
Walter?
Is this a real problem for the council or not? I'd like to call for a vote.
Before we call for, can I ask a question? One more question? I'm not there yet.
I'm not the mayor.
I don't wanna violate any rules. So where's the money gonna come from? We sat here last month looking for 18,500. Where's the money gonna come from? What are we not gonna spend on?
Well, I'm kind of agreeing with you because we had a budget voted on by the town. And, you know, I'm not going into any specifics about your need or anything, I'm just going through the generalities of how it works. It's the town voted on a budget, and if we had Park and Rec or Facilities or Board of Ed or $18,000 community center, always everyone coming up each month saying, "We need more than we budgeted." We need more than we budgeted, you know, like I don't know who said at the beginning, this seems like a discussion for budget time, not now. And I know you guys wanna plan going forward, but this is almost like a presence resetting that if you feel you need more than what was budgeted, come to the town and ask for it and see if you can get it. Because, you know, I know yours is more of a life or death, but every department would love to have another 20 grand into their budget right now. And that's where I have a problem. I don't disagree with any of your needs, but, you know, this seems like a conversation we should have in, I don't know what, March or whatever before our budget time.
February.
February, sorry. Just reminding.
Any other discussion?
I just wanna point out that our motion that was made was for your original request, which is $25,000. And we all saw in our packet that we received that...
Our sheet was there on the second.
No, no, I'm talking, no, that I saw, I figured that was, yeah. But we also got your worksheet, and it does show 5,000 for 2021. And, I don't know, I just wanna be sure everybody remembers that it's, the motion is for 25,000. Go ahead.
Is there a motion on the floor?
Yeah.
Yes.
There is no motion, yeah.
Katie made a motion, and Walter seconded it.
Oh, okay.
Motion back, please.
Yeah.
To approve the Fire Chiefs' request to restore funding of $25,000 to the fire apparatus expenditure account.
And it was seconded by Walter?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other, any other discussion?
I just have a question. Before, it's like, we ask everybody, how can we make a decision on giving 25,000 or 25? Where's it gonna come from? Our finance director's not here. Do we know what account this is gonna come from? I'm talking to you guys. You mayor?
No. Can't take it from Waste Manager.
It leads us into the next item, and, you know, so we all can think about this, is that if, it's not a matter of what's more important, obviously. I mean, fire department's important. But where will we come with the money? Where is it gonna come from?
So perhaps it should be tabled until our finance director can present.
I don't think we're allowed to table. Don't we have to postpone it? Table stays within the same meeting.
Yes.
Postpone goes to the next meeting.
Right. Rather than to, you know, deny or whatever.
You'd say, "From my lesson learned."
Yeah, right.
You'd say, postpone, postpone. If you were to say that, it'd be postpone.
Right, to the next regular meeting, which is on January the...
14th.
14th. So do I need to...
You'd have to withdraw your motion, and Walter would have to withdraw his second.
I'd like to withdraw my motion.
I'm not, I'm not saying one way or the other, but you guys are saying you're meeting sometime before the 14th of January, or is it after that?
We could make it after that. We have to meet usually in January to do a whole bunch of things that we do as the three chiefs. The capital plan is one of them. We meet with all of our officers, schedule a lot of different things. We go over NFPA, we go over DOT, there's a bunch of different things. But that has to be done before we do our presentation before this room for a budget.
It's just that I think you can appreciate, we appreciate where you're at, and I think you can appreciate where we're at. And if it's just postpone it to the next meeting, that's why I've withdrawn my motion.
Walter, do you withdraw yours?
I'll withdraw my second then, but let me make the comment here. I hope it doesn't come to the day where we have to pay for a fire department. Then we're gonna be screaming, "Will we gonna get the money first?" What these firemen want, I'm all for it. Personal comment.
So we could find out where to go. So we're postponing this item...
Definitively.
To the, definitively to our next regular meeting, which is January 14th of 2019.
Now, one thing. If any of you would like to come up and go through my firehouse with me, I have an open door. I will gladly walk anybody through my firehouse, show you what we have, what we do, what our capability is.
Thank you.
You know?
Yep, thank you.
Trying to get you guys to understand what we do in a meeting is kinda tough.
Yep.
If I could show you, you're gonna be sitting there and go, "Wow, you do that? Wow, you do that? Wow, you do that?" By all means, please.
Thank you.
Contact me.
I know all of you would.
I'll be happy to invite anybody through.
I'm gonna make one comment. Listen, we know you guys are doing an amazing job with some pretty old equipment. In my mind, there's no doubt that the equipment needs to be safe for you guys and for the public. My only question is, and my only reservation is right now, is where is the money coming from in the middle of a budget cycle?
Okay, well, that's my...
That was my only, that's my only throw in. It's not doubting your expertise, all the great work you do. We are indebted to you guys. I think many people who survive fires because of your quick response. There's no doubt you guys do an amazing job. It's right now in the middle of budget season while, you know, as you've heard before, last meeting there was a large sum of money having to go out for legal expenses. There's people coming at us for this. So we're trying to get ourselves ready for budget season, just like you guys are. And just having the finance director to tell us where this money can come from, and us to have a discussion on that is, you know, is just prudence on our part. We do not want you in unsafe equipment at all, and you're doing a great job.
I withdrew my motion. Walter withdrew his second.
Okay.
All right, now I'd like to make a motion to postpone discussion of the Fire Chiefs' request to restore funding of 25,000 to the fire apparatus expenditure account to our, definitively to our next regular meeting, which will be held January 14th, 2019.
Second.
Is that okay, ma'am?
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm opposed. The taxpayers voted. I think we should, I don't know what they voted.
I'm opposed.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a safe holiday.
Next is...
Okay, item number 10, Community Center.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
This'll probably be the same argument for another 45 minutes. Where's the $18,000 gonna come from?
Yes.
Are we gonna do this again?
Well, we don't have anyone here to talk about financial end of the filter, so what do we do?
Okay, but what I'm saying is, are we gonna argue for another 45 minutes? Where is the money gonna come from?
Unless you know where it should come from. You ready to vote? Okay, well, I'll just read it. Item number 10. Move to, in the community, to accept the Community Center Committee's request for $18,000 to fund a market research study.
I second it because I'm in favor of this.
Any discussion on the motion? Dr. Moe?
I really thought a lot of these things that we finance, we, in the past, we've always said it will come out of one of several possible accounts with the recommendation from the Director of Finance. We've done that dozens of times over the years, so why are we not doing it tonight?
I've always thought it was absurd. I still think it's absurd. I've commented several times on the fact that that's absurd. We were elected to do a job to determine what account it comes from. You even stated for yourself at one of the meetings, you don't even think a board of finance should exist. We should do the job.
I would love to see that happen.
So let's do the job.
You wanna do that? You wanna go there?
Yeah.
Let's go there. Let's go back and redo what the charter commission did. Come on. Let's get rid of the block of finance.
But, doctor, that was your statement, that you wanted us as a council to take the bull by the horn to make decisions. So here we are tonight, we keep postponing more decisions, let's take the bull by the horn.
That's not what the charter says.
Tell me what account you wanna take it from.
We have more than enough money in our, what do we call it today, the undesignated portfolio, we got $17 million now.
Don't look at the attorney, doesn't know.
I... So there's plenty of money there. Moody's only wants us to carry 10% to 15%, we're well over that. So 25,000 or 18,000, it barely touches that. So, yeah, that's where I would take the money from.
I'm still back on the, and this is a shrinking tax town, a town that's shrinking with a shrinking tax base. So we can't keep thinking in growth right now. We have to be thinking of, every penny counts. And we budget a certain amount at budget time, and taxpayers vote on it, and I think it's our job to hold it to that. You know, it's just, we have to start thinking differently. If my household was losing income, I wouldn't be spending extra money, I'd be spending less. And I just don't understand it. And you can say, "Yeah, we have distant savings or this and this account," or this. Yes, but those accounts aren't gonna keep growing, and there's our costs. We got saved this year by the, allowing to piggyback on the state's healthcare, but if that didn't happen, there was another cost that goes up. Costs are going up, and income's going down. So we have to watch our pennies, and that's how I feel about a lot of this stuff.
Any other discussion? Tom?
I stated this before, and will state it again. I think this should be added to the Plan of Conservation and Development discussions and the surveys because it's beyond just, does the town need a community center? There's a lot of things the town wants. We went up against that in 2008. Those discussions were very well-attended. The survey was a very broad survey that was done, and I think if we weren't in the middle of a Plan of Conservation and Development right now, it may be a different story. But right now, we have that ability to do it within that body, as well as ask other questions of what is needed in town. You know, people don't just want a community center. There's a lot of people who want pools. There's people who want consolidated sport fields. Some people would like the community center in town, some people would like the community center out of town. But there's a lot of other questions that could be asked of the general public that is not just gonna be, well, it's just a survey about a community center. I think you'd have a greater response when handled through the P O C D. It's just my opinion. We're gonna be doing it now. It's gonna be a lengthy discussion. I think it could be incorporated into that, into those discussions and those surveys.
Sorry to bring up what I've said at least half a dozen times again, but there's gonna be a new twist, I promise. You can't, I appreciate that the Plan of Conservation and Development has community forums and asks questions, and you can get to the heart of the matter. But the more you blur the lines about the different types of questions you want answered, the less clear your answers become. People get weary. So I'm still an advocate for doing a separate market research study. However, watching social media and reflecting on the meeting minutes from our previous town councils and when the committee has presented, I'm gonna withdraw my support for having the committee do a market research study, and I'll tell you why. And this is nothing against, I know there have been several members of the committee that worked really, really hard and have done their best to try to move this forward. But the committee, select members of the committee, I apologize, have demonstrated confirmation bias time and time again. And when you do market research, if you have confirmation bias, you're gonna get the answer you think you wanna get. We've had leadership of that committee stand up here and say they wanna see the community center in JPS, full stop. That's confirmation bias. So as much as I think there are well-intentioned people, the discord that Pat spoke about in public comment about there being such a polarization of opinions on the committee, and them not being able to come to consensus as best they could, I think we need to take that conflict out, give the committee direction to have them write their report where they are right now, and not spin their wheels. I said this last town council, let's not yank them around. Let's have them finish it up where they are and find a different way to get the market research done. I don't know where the money is gonna come from, but we don't have it, or we think we don't have it. So let's move on. And there's another reason I'm very concerned about the bias. And it's a little bit of a stretch, but I'm gonna go there. So if you look at, there's an attorney, Austin Wolf, who does land use and real estate law. And he talks about case law where, when there is prejudice, townspeople have the right to overturn the decision of a commission or a committee. And I'm gonna read a couple of paragraphs here from some of his opinions. "Predisposition has no statutory basis and has evolved on a case-by-case basis." "Predisposition means a predetermination of the issues by the authority that is showing that a board or commission has made up its mind, essentially decided before the public commitment." "It's more difficult to establish predisposition than conflict of interest, but once proven, the results are the same. The action of the board or commission is deemed to be invalid." So let's not go down that path. I think the committee has bias, select members of the committee have bias. I think others have great intention, but I don't want them to keep working and then just have it overturned at the end of the day. That's what I got.
Any other discussion on the motion on the floor? All those in favor?
Hold on, I'm sorry.
Of the...
The motion is to approve their request for $18,000 for a market research study.
All those in favor of the motion? All those opposed? Okay, next...
Item 11, Public Works. 11A is discussion and possible action regarding the project on Trinisky Road. Item B is discussion and possible action on the creation of Scenic Road Committee.
Good evening, Dan Staten. I'm Tom here for Public Works. I'm the contributor and my director. I'm gonna go screen it up, warm up here, and a short presentation, give a copy to the reporting secretary. Yeah, that would be. So the Trinisky Road Bridge, there's the bridge number, we're Town 095. Just in sequence, I assume alphabetically, this was the ninth bridge. This is currently signed as a one-lane bridge in each direction. So just to give a little bit of project history, the bridge was listed as constructed in 1930, where you have some records that indicate in the 80s that it was rehabilitated. But in the summer of 2010, we had a consulting engineering firm inspect, and we, as a result of that inspection list, further developed our capital plan, including the Trinisky Road Bridge. So in the fall of 2017, we signed a contract with Anchor Engineering, and they began their preliminary engineering phase of the project. So over the winter, we had contact with abutting landowners, specifically the Warrens and the Tistas. and the Tistas. There's also Reinhards and the Fogerdees on the other two corners of the bridge. So, Anchor Engineering continued their hydraulic work to determine the size of the bridge opening, including a meeting with D E P. We've met in the field, as indicated by some of the residents, and we had an information meeting as a result of those previous meetings and to continue moving the project forward. So, those of you that aren't familiar, these are both the north abutment of the bridge. You can see some of the stone structures, some of the concrete abutments, and the bridge rail system, which is approximately, you know, just your typical steel inch-and-a-quarter rail there with the wood posts in place. You can see traffic on the road in that case. So, for where we are in the project, our engineers' preliminary engineering plan and cost estimate is at about fifty percent of the design. So, this is a good time to present that to the council and as a result of our meetings with the abutting landowners and some of the neighbors. So, what we were proposing is a typical design that we do when we're going forward, which is a two-lane bridge, which in this case would be made out of a double box culvert in your information. And that is shown, and I'll show that on the next slide. This is proposed twenty-four-foot lane width and an overall of twenty-seven and a half-foot bridge width, and the estimated cost is six hundred thousand dollars. So, we're looking to fund this with local funds, not participate in state local or the federal local bridge program. The existing conditions, which I think are germane to the neighbors' discussions, is current span is about fourteen point three feet, which hydraulically is not adequate. And then, the road width is sixteen point three feet wide, and we have the information there of the total bridge width, which is a relation to the current bridge rail and safety systems that are there. For reference, the road width on either side is significantly wider than the bridge, but not untypical for areas of both Upper Northville and Maryal, and as we indicated, there's a thirty mile an hour speed limit. So, downstream, coming from top to bottom, what we're proposing is a double box, which the normal flow box is on the right, south, and then additional hydraulic capacity is added by an additional box. This train's about ten and a half miles up through New Preston and into Morris area.
Katie?
One question, Dan.
Yep.
What, you know, you just said that this is typical of our, some of our more rural areas. So, what's the number-one reason that this popped up to be changed from what it is to what so many people don't want?
Sorry about that, obviously.
I think two factors.
The first, the top reason?
It's a structurally deficient bridge and a functionally obsolete bridge.
Okay. And if you were to replace it with a similar width, not make it more of a speedway, which I understand the theory here, why can't you do that? Why do you have to do this two-lane bridge?
So, in short...
Is there a law?
I'm going to give you my opinion.
Is there a law?
My professional opinion.
I understand, but I'm not on here, but is there a law?
There is no law. There is no law that says you have to do it.
Okay.
It's not one law that says you have to do it. It really boils down to liability and exposure.
How long is this pending?
And professional engineering judgment. When what we're doing is spending public dollars to replace a structure that you basically, in a hundred and fifty-year time span, get one chance to replace. This is our chance to replace it. We can choose to leave it the same as a one-lane, functionally obsolete bridge, but structurally sound. We could do that. That's one option. You could upgrade it to a two-lane structure that the rest of the roadway exists as. The rest of the road is a two-lane structure, two-lane facility with a one-lane obstacle in the middle of it, which is the bridge. And the bridge is the most costly item to replace. If you spend the money to upgrade it and make it structurally sound, that's fine, but you're not improving the functionally obsoleteness of it by doing that.
Is it a hundred and fifty years old?
All you're doing is improving the structural capacity.
Is it a hundred and fifty years it's been there?
It's been there eighty years now.
Okay. Well, you said...
When we install the new one, it'll be there for at least another seventy-five years.
But, you've mentioned something about once every hundred and fifty years. I'm just curious.
Correct. Because it was replaced in nineteen thirty, and it's going to maybe get replaced in two thousand and twenty, and it won't get replaced again until at least the year two thousand one hundred.
So, do you weigh the safety of making this a two-lane bridge against the safety that now the people who live there and have already made it clear that by increasing, it will increase the speed of people on this road and make it a little more dangerous, or a lot more dangerous, depending on who you're talking to? But, how do you weigh that? I mean, I'm not challenging that, what you just told me. You're the expert in that. But, I want to put my mind around, how do you weigh? And there's also an aesthetic component, which I don't think we should discount. We are a rural town, and we'd like to stay that way. You know, it's the beauty of our town.
Sure.
And we do have areas that are not built up and have, they've existed with this bridge all this time. So, how do you say that the safety in one place is more important than the safety in the other?
Well, I don't, I'm not aware of any data that says people will speed any faster than they're going on the current road. I'm not aware of any facts that would support that or discount that. One way or the other. I don't know that that's, that's an assumption.
So, the residents, the residents' comments...
What the assumption, what the assumption is, and the assumption is correct, is they'll speed, they'll continue going the same speeds they're going over the bridge, which they currently can't do. I don't believe there's any factual data to say that they'll go any faster on the road than they're going currently.
Maybe they're going too fast now, is what you're saying?
That's an, that's absolute enforcement issue that, you know, engineering controls don't necessarily exclude from a road.
And how is it, I guess, is another thing I've asked the mayor this, how is it that it got to the point that you're ready to do this and residents are up in arms about it without any, I don't know, whatever process? I mean, you choose, I know you have a way, you choose what you're going to repair, et cetera. But, when residents are making their thoughts known to you, why isn't it taken into consideration?
Well, let me step back and explain the process. Maybe that will help you understand what we do in designing these. We've come through our budget hearings here to request funds to design a bridge. It's in our five-year capital plan. You guys approved the funding for engineering services to do this particular bridge. It was in the report. It wasn't blind to anybody. It was spoken in public forum. It was publicly known that we were going to be designing the Trinisky Road Bridge. We initiated an R F P process. We selected an engineering consultant firm. We signed the contract, as Dan said, in two thousand and seventeen with them, and issued them a notice to proceed. And what they did and substantially do through the preliminary engineering phase is investigate what needs to be done to make the bridge sound and function properly according to the standards that exist. And there are standards that exist out there for bridge design. We do not have, the town of New Milford does not have a separate policy, separate from Ashto or the state of Connecticut or any other functional agency that has bridge design standards out there. We do not have a separate policy that dictates what the town of New Milford does separately from those.
Where does the residents come into it, though? I know it was in the budget.
The regulations, you said?
No, the residents.
The residents. Because it's there.
Residents, yeah. I'm going to get to that. I will. What we initiate is a preliminary engineering study to find out the conditions of the hydraulics. Dan mentioned the hydraulics. We do some investigatory geotechnical engineering work and determine what types of bridges would be available to be installed there. Once we get some of that preliminary engineering data, we're substantially at the point we're at right now, which is going to a public informational meeting. We had talked to, you know, Dan had mentioned it several times, some residents out there. We had told them we were going to be doing some geo-tech work. We told them we were going to be doing some survey work. Very possibly, they might see flags and people out there. So, we certainly made them aware that, you know, work would be ongoing in terms of our investigatory process. They had asked us specifically about type of bridge going in. They wanted to meet with us out there. We facilitated at least one field meeting now, or maybe two. One with Dan, I believe, initially, and very well, maybe a second one. And then, subsequent to those meetings, we had enough information to basically hold at least, it was really an informal public informational meeting at this point, for the neighbors that had expressed concern to, I'll say, explain to them some of the design features, functions, and things that, you know, we go through the engineering process to make those determinations as to the type of structure that can go in, start making some, let's call them aesthetic decisions, and other function of decisions that we can look at in the design process, such as the guide route type that might be installed there, you know, the long term, so that we don't pick it...
How long ago was that?
As a standard function, but we, you know, we recognize that this is a scenic road, has scenic characteristics, and aesthetics would obviously be a big concern...
Sure.
...to the locals up there. So, we wanted to get their input and show them some examples of what could be done.
And when did you do that, Mike? That's the thing I'm missing.
We did that in November.
Oh, just this past November?
This past November.
Okay.
Well, just about three weeks ago.
Yeah. Okay. So, because, you know, we heard from residents recently.
Paul?
So, then the meeting that was held on January thirty, so two thousand and eighteen, for Ms. Rucchio and his letter, what was that mean?
January thirty first, you said?
I think that's what the letter said, right? Yeah.
I didn't read the letter.
I don't know. I didn't see the letter.
I just had, like, with them for the neighbors, and that's just part of our preliminary engineering process as the engineering department.
You go back to the...
You know, that there are...
Dan, can you go back to the first slide?
So, as part of the January thirty-first meeting, was there an overwhelming position from the neighbors as it related to one lane or two lane?
Yes. Certainly, as early as, at least, certainly as far back as March, we knew about, you know, their concerns about a one-lane bridge versus two-lane bridge.
So, why didn't it come to us, though?
I'm sorry?
Considering that it's a scenic road ordinance, which gives a level of discretion and control to the fact of being sensitive to any expansion, whether it be the widening of the roadway or the bridges, and the fact that the public had expressed concern, which you just stated was basically the majority of them.
Yep.
I think before we started the fifty percent design phase, it would have been great to have you guys come to us. Unfortunately, we didn't hear from the public, but I would expect them to. I expect their concerns to be issued to your department, and then you guys to say, hey, we got a problem. We think as engineers, we should do two lanes, but the neighbors are quite insistent in the meeting that we had, that it'd be a one-lane bridge.
Yep.
We're looking to you for guidance before we start spending the taxpayers' money.
Well, let me explain a little bit. Certainly, we haven't done anything advanced beyond preliminary engineering studies, hydraulic opening, foundation types that can go in there, and types of structures that can go in. Forgetting about the width of the road itself, functionally, what we've done so far doesn't change that dynamic at all.
So, we're just talking...
So, while we're doing, what we, we got to the point of understanding all of that stuff and being able to schedule, I think we had started talking to the mayor about this certainly earlier than that, I believe, over the summer. I think we had some meetings, if I recall, maybe in June with some of the neighbors up there, and we understood some of the components a little bit better about what their concerns were. And we started talking to the mayor about that, and just because of time schedules and, you know, functionality of our design engineer and what the information we could get, you know, we obviously just had, you know, several months go by until we could get back to, let's say, the information or meeting itself. We haven't advanced, you know, any other designs. It's not a, you know, formalized, you know, bridge design at this point. You're seeing preliminary sketches really of a, you know, a component that we would recommend being, you know, being installed there in terms of a box culvert structure. Would you eliminate the deep foundation issues, which can be costly, probably about double to triple what, you know, the estimated cost is for a box culvert project? I believe we're looking at about one point two to one point eight million to do a bridge, conventional bridge, deep foundation structure.
So, there's been one accident at that bridge in how many years?
Specifically, there was one accident. This road has several accidents.
No, I'm talking specifically to the bridge or an extremely close proximity.
There's one at the bridge.
Okay.
In how many years? I didn't get that answer.
Typically, the history is five years that we're looking at, not longer history for that.
And then, what was the comment, just so the neighbors can understand? There was a comment that there were other plans for this road. What did that mean, just so we know?
I don't know. You have to ask them. I, we have no other plans for this road other than to replace the bridge. I don't, I have no knowledge of any other, we haven't discussed any other plans for it. We haven't mentioned any other plans for it, and I really don't know where that came from.
So, if there were cars, you had mentioned earlier that you didn't see the fact of the two-lane versus one-lane bridge slowing people down in any way. So, if there's people coming in opposing directions right now, does one of the people have to stop?
Yes. They do.
Okay. So, in that instance, there wouldn't be a difference?
There would be a difference?
Yeah.
In speeds?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or if there's more danger, you've got to stop real quickly.
I think I mentioned that. Going over the bridge, there's obviously going to be a speed differential from current condition to future condition. What I think I said, or let me re-explain what I said, is there's no evidence that they're going to go even faster than they're currently going on the rest of the road.
If no...
No, no, no. I'm speaking to the speeds they currently travel over the bridge, a one-lane bridge, to what the speeds would be if it was a two-lane bridge. Will those increase, stay the same, or decrease with a one-lane?
On average, they would have to increase because it's a two-lane bridge, and they would not have to slow down or stop to go over that bridge.
So, then we're increasing speeds in front of neighbors?
Correct.
Okay. Just to better understand that.
Mike?
Yeah, a couple of questions. So, can we replace the existing bridge with a one-lane bridge as it is?
You can do whatever you want.
Okay. So, there's a yes.
Yes.
Number two, I haven't been up there for a little bit. Is there signs on either side of the bridge that says one-lane bridge ahead?
Yes.
Correct.
And how far away is that sign?
Generally, about two hundred feet in each direction and adequate sight lines.
If I remember right, it's a pretty straightforward shot down.
There's about a three hundred and fifty-foot sight line to the west of that up into the current track.
So, if the neighbors want a single-lane bridge and it's a scenic road, to me, it's just, if we can just move this along, that would be great.
Well, no, I'm going to give you my professional opinion. I'll state it again, and the same thing I stated at the public informational meeting, Mike, and to the rest of the council. My recommendation to you, and I'm basing it on a Texas Transportation Institute study that I was given by our Technology Transfer Center, meaning our Connecticut T-two Center at the University of Connecticut. It does some research for us. They referenced us to this effective bridge width and highway safety, and I will get the mayor's office a copy of this so you can all see it. I'll give you my scanned, or I'll call it my highlighted notes, but you can read the whole study. You know, it talks about bridge width, effective bridge width. My opinion is that presents a liability to the town of New Milford, and which is why I'm standing here in front of you. Okay? It's a decision you certainly can make. There's no law, regulation, authority against it, but as your engineer, giving you advice on liability, I'm telling you that it's a liability based on what I see in the studies out there. You're inherently going to spend public money to not improve what is to be a known problematic safety issue, which is narrowing of a road at a bridge. And when we spend public money to fix that, we have an inherent obligation as engineers to attempt to at least repair those situations and fix them. And if we don't take the opportunity to do that, that's fine, but that's not an engineering decision, that's a policy decision. It's why it's this board's decision to determine how that's going to go. I'm not going to be the decision-maker on that. I'm advising you against it, but it's ultimately your decision to make, and you're welcome to make it in whichever way you feel is appropriate. to make it in whichever way you feel is appropriate. But I believe it's inherent liability to this town and at expense of this town in the long-term longevity of having that kind of infrastructure out there.
So it's proportionately safer bringing the width to match the approach in exit width?
Lisa?
So I totally understand your recommendation and your perspective, and I appreciate that. You've said a couple of times, it's up to you, meaning the town council. Just a couple of points. So this is a designated scenic road, correct?
Correct.
All right. According to our own charter, a narrow road is correlated with high scenic beauty. Designated highway should never be widened unless the amount of traffic, as determined by a factual study commissioned by the town of New Milford, demands it to keep the road in good and sufficient repair and passable condition. So are we going to follow our own rules or not? So there's number one. Number two?
You're not widening your road, by the way.
Number two. Number two. As Ms. Rucchio said, it's not up to us. If this is a scenic road, the process for alteration or improvements is that we refer the proposals to the planning commission, the mayor approves and appoints a committee to advise the town council on the alteration being proposed and any alternative solutions. And it's very specific about how many people, what they do, and how they come up to their decision. So really, the motion on the table is, are we moving this forward to the planning commission and is Mayor Bass appointing a committee to look into this matter as recommended by our Director of Public Works?
Tom?
It's not a motion. I'm just saying, let's, you know, here's our rules. Let's follow our rules.
Right.
Tom?
You know, I understand the residents' concerns up there, but to replace the bridge as speed control, as traffic control, doesn't make a lot of sense to me. You're taking a two-lane bridge and for a short period of time compressing that. Now, we may have only had one accident the last few years, but you have two young inexperienced drivers come down that hill on a snowy day. Nobody knows who's going to stop. What's going to happen at that bridge? I mean, I agree with you, that road's got to slow down. I disagree with you. I agree with you. But to use the bridge as the method to slow it down doesn't make any sense. It's not going to make the road any less scenic because the road is a little wider at the bridge. The bridge is already wide. We just had a lengthy conversation about safety in town. What about fire trucks? Suppose we've got multiple fire trucks going up there to try to go over that bridge?
In opposite directions?
No, you've got fire trucks going up. No, you've got fire trucks going up the hill and people coming maybe from that area going down the hill. Councilman Zemanski.
Somebody else is there.
I mean, there's some sort of, I mean, I agree with you, we need to slow that road down. Why don't we put up a, why don't we put up a camera and snap people and send people tickets in the mail like they do around the country when you're flying down any sort of road? I mean, there's got to be a method, there's got to be a method in which to do this that's not going to prohibit us from replacing a bridge that, according to our engineers' opinion, is unsafe. I mean, I understand both sides of the argument, and I'm not trying to increase traffic up there. I live up in that region. It's, we want it nice and quiet, but I think it also should be safe at the same time. Maybe there's another method to slow the cars down, which I think needs to happen anyway. We have the chief of police here. We need a way to slow that road down so that we're not centering the whole argument on replacing the bridge because the road's got to be slower.
Mike?
Do I have a quick question?
Yeah, Mike, just quick. So you said we weren't widening the road, but it's a 24-foot-wide bridge. So what's the travel way then? Because the road's 23 feet on the west approach and 21 feet on the west approach. So are we widening the road?
The approaches, the approaches would be widened. You're correct. To the, tapered back to the existing road, but, you know, this is a bridge project, it's not a road project.
But we would be widening the road.
So we're not doing, other than the couple hundred feet of approaches, we're not doing any more road work than, you know, what would be required for the bridge itself.
Real quick, well, a couple of points. First one, is this bridge has to be replaced at that point where it's deemed unsafe or will be unsafe soon?
Correct.
Okay. All right. So then I have a question to everybody here that wants to keep it for safety reasons. Is there anywhere else in town where we took a road and made it one lane for a small period of time, then widened to two lanes just to slow down traffic? At Canterbury School, we put in speed bumps. We didn't take a lane and put it into one, so I get everyone's concern, but it is definitely more safe to have the road continue the same width throughout than it is to shrink it. I understand about the other thing about shrinking a road because it's a scenic road, but I don't know anywhere else in town where we take a two-lane road, bring it to one lane, and then back to two-lane to control traffic.
Sorry, that wasn't my point. My point is, we can sit here and debate it all night. It's not up to us. We got to go, we got to go to, refer to planning, appoint a committee, and they're going to come back with a recommendation.
And then you can ask.
My question has nothing to do with that.
Doug?
So obviously, Mike and Dan, I value your opinion. You guys are way smarter than Oliver B., but I'm looking at what Lisa had mentioned, the councilman here, about the process. Submitting the proposal, then on the next council meeting, the mayor will set up a commission, and then it has to go through the process. So I think we have to go by the rules regardless of how we feel about the road being wider, smaller, whatever, there's a process. So at the end of the process, there'll be a decision. Can't be made tonight, it'll be made at the next meeting, but it has to be made by a commission, and then referred back to us, and then we'll go there. But to sit here and argue about a road being wider or smaller, there's a process we have to do, so I think we need to move forward.
It's a scenic road.
Right. Because it has its specifics. It's different than a regular road. It's a scenic road. I'm glad that the public brought it up and made my attention, because I never knew about this as well. Maybe a lot of us, anyone don't know this much.
It's been a significant period of time since we have a scenic road.
My last question. Mike, just have a question. This is just for future reference. So in the process, which I know you follow it perfectly right, and you did have a meeting with the residents, were the residents really aware as a group, and I don't know how many people you let know that this is happening, you said you met some people on-site or whatever, but are all the people who live on the road notified to the point that they would realize, and I don't think they want you to leave it that as a way to control traffic. I think there's a lot of reasons they want to keep it that way. But is there a way in our process, or could you somehow put it in our process when this comes up? We have a lot of places in this town that are like that, and we have residents who are upset, and I think that they need to be heard. Obviously, I think you do, but maybe the process could be just a little more thorough so that it isn't down to each hour when they're here pleading for their neighborhood and their children not to get run over and all of that. It doesn't need to come to this, right?
Public information.
So, yeah. Do you publicly note, is it a letter to everybody?
We didn't, so try to explain again what we did with this particular bridge. We did not hold a formal public informational meeting. We held a local public information meeting. This was, this was very specific to the residents that had expressed concern to us that we had been meeting with out there over a period of months, as we had talked about as early as, at least as back as March. We normally would publish a notice in the paper.
Yeah, right.
And post, and we have been posting, I believe, at many of our other projects, you might have seen, but we post a public hearing sign effectively or public informational meeting to be held at a particular location at a time, so that at least passer-bys and people that read the paper for public notices can show up at will as well. I mean, we don't exclude or, you know, encourage any particular party one way or the other to come, but, you know, we try to get everybody's involvement that has an interest in it.
Can we move this on a little bit, please?
So we have a...
Just one quick thing to add, is that this process proceeds, to Lisa's point, standards for alteration widths. There's no discretion. The town attorney can, should give us an opinion on this. Designated highways should never be widened unless the amount of traffic, which would mean volume, as determined by a factual study commissioned by the town of New Milford, which we haven't done, demands it to keep the road in good and sufficient repair and passable condition.
Where's the money coming from?
Doesn't say anything about safety.
You already read it.
Correct. It doesn't say anything about safety.
It doesn't say anything about safety. So, okay. We have a motion.
Any other discussion?
What is the motion?
Right, I'm sorry. Right, it was discussion.
The motion is...
If I could just take everybody's just for a moment, we're going to follow the process, right? So here's the process. Alteration or improvement procedure. This is our charter. The alteration or improvement of a designated scenic road shall be determined by the town council. That's the body right here. Any proposal for alteration or improvement, whether public or private, by public or private applicant, shall be submitted to the town council, along with a suitable map. Do we have a suitable map today?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I don't know if we have a map.
Showing in detail the proposed alteration or improvement. At its next regular town, at its next regularly scheduled meeting after submission of the proposal, that's our January meeting, the town council shall refer the proposal to the planning commission. And the mayor, with the approval of the council, shall pursuant to the charter, appoint a committee to advise the town council on the alterations or improvements being proposed and any alternative solution. The advisory committee, this will dovetail into the next part of it, which was the creation of the scenic road committee specifically for this road, shall appoint a committee to advise the council on the alterations or improvements being proposed and any alternative solutions. The advisory committees shall consist of six electors of the town and shall include one lucky member of the town council, a lucky member of the planning commission, Mike, public works director, or as designee, the town director of community planning or economic development, or if that position is not filled, if he or she is not elector of the town, such other member duly appointed, and two representatives of existing landowners along a scenic road. The mayor shall, by giving reasonable writ notice to all existing landowners along a scenic road, call and chair a meeting of the landowners, at which the landowners present shall select their two representatives. So that, to me, is the clear path of how we're going to start doing this.
Yep.
Okay? So, are we all?
All right.
Yes, Matt, you're looking confused.
Just for the record, it's the code of order that sits on the chart.
Code of works is fine. Thank you. Okay. So we all are in agreement? That's how we're going to file the process?
Yep.
Excellent. Thank you. So we don't need a motion?
We do not, no. But do we need to say that we're moving this forward to the meeting regularly in January? That's all you need to do?
We all do.
At its next regularly scheduled meeting. That's next time.
Right, okay.
All right.
All right.
So, next is, we already handled B as well, which is the scenic road committee, and we'll be handling it at the next meeting. Okay?
And that lucky council member will put your name in.
Yep.
Item 12, move to authorize the mayor to call a special town meeting for 6:15 p.m. on January 14th, that should be 2019, in the E. Paul Martin Room of Town Hall, 10 Main Street, Connecticut, New Milford, Connecticut. Consider the following. A, an easement with respect to installation and maintenance of traffic signalization devices at the intersection of Bridge and Railroad as requested by the Connecticut Department of Transportation. And B, an easement requiring construction access for bridge rehabilitation at the intersection of Bridge Street and Young Field Road as requested by the Connecticut Department of Transportation.
Any discussion on the motion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item 13, discussion and possible action for Pettybone fee and rental use and procedure.
So I had a councilman ask for this to be put on the agenda concerning the fee schedules of this comparative to the other buildings in town, which was in your handout. So it shows the current rates for John Pettybone, the MACS, and the school itself, which are on here.
Can you speak to it?
Yep.
I'm just going to ask a question.
No, let me just, so this is my proposal. So just to get the background, so it looks like this, and your packet's current proposed. This is on John Pettybone. As long as we are, dare I say, in limbo, there are agencies in there, there are people using the facility, let's get somebody to cover the utilities, and while we figure out what we're trying to do, and be fiscally responsible. So what I did was I looked at the board of ed rates and tried to normalize a little bit closer to what they do, why recreate the wheel. And so the only free, quote-unquote, free groups would be emergency services. Everybody else pays something, number one. And number two, a modification was made after I threw the proposal forward. I would actually recommend that we have one point of contact for organizing rentals because in my world, a matrix organization typically doesn't work, especially when you've got money changing hands, so you want just one point of contact. So we can track how many rentals there are, we can track how much money's coming in, people aren't confused as to who's doing what. And that's it. I took a stab at it and opened any suggestions, but that was kind of the thought process behind it.
Kate?
Yes, and I appreciate that you did, and most of this is just wonderful. There are a few things that I think we should go over as far as some of these groups would not really be able to put $250 down and not get it back. You know, Girl Scout troop, you'd have to hold the check, which, again, I agree with you, one person should handle this. But one of the things that's kind of important here is when the cafeteria or any part of the building is used, and we have a note here about having the facilities' maintenance people okay it. If you're, I've been in there in groups, and say there's coffee and cake and cookies on Saturday and they leave at 3:00, and no one comes in to look at that building, that room, until Monday. I mean, that's a, that's a mouse heaven waiting to happen. And then if we have someone from facilities come in on a Saturday or a Sunday or after 4:30, we're talking about a minimum number of hours and a cost, I believe we said, about $120 or so, which, again, would be a burden on some of these, you know, let's just take the Girl Scouts or the Boy Scouts to start with. So while I don't, I do believe that we need to take this away from costing the town, the mayor's in the process of coming up with the finest department, with a per-square-foot cost for our utilities and et cetera, which, along with a deposit, so to speak, I'd like to see what that is and how that works out for the spaces that are able to be rented. And maybe we can make a coalesce the two things, because what's existing in our other facilities is working, but I can, but some of these things, like the high fee or, you know, what you call it, cancellation fee? Was that one of them? Security deposit?
I didn't change that. That was all the same policy that we currently have in place.
Yeah, some of that is in place in the paper, but it doesn't necessarily happen. And we want to make it, we want to make it equitable for everyone, you know, and make it across the board, because we have new people, new groups using that building who were not using other, these other facilities before. One of the reasons is, there's no cost. And I think we should take a look at who uses it and look at some of the ways we can make it a little less impactful on the budgets of groups who don't have excess money sitting there, and how we work out the facility person checking on what's happened. This is a few things that I thought of when I looked it over. Otherwise, I mean, I think it's good to include the people who are there, the for-profits as well as the nonprofits.
Dr. Mull?
Couple of things I just wanted to clarify in this. You know, Park and Rec does facility requests all the time, so this is just kind of stuff they do every single month. So I don't see any issue with just giving this to Park and Rec and having to deal with it and not having the mayor's office deal with it.
So right now, Dr. Mull, just so you know, the mayor's office deals with part of it?
Right.
And Park and Rec, and Park and Rec didn't want the additional...
They didn't want it?
No.
No, they trust that too. Under the following groups and organizations shall be exempt. Governmental entities needs to be specified. Does that include federal, state?
Like cert?
No, civil defense, civil defense, direct cross, emergency, and then, you know, the town committee meeting, it's a regular meeting. I looked at that right out of the O U language.
Just municipal?
This is municipal, yeah.
Just municipal, that should be clarified. Towards the bottom, the bullet points, the next last bullet point. Will be used on any walls, add comma windows, comma floors, comma ceilings.
Wait, where's the tape? Hold on.
Facility restrictions. There are six bullet points, the next last bullet point. Facility restrictions. There are six bullet points, the next last bullet point. No text, duct tape, masking tape, et cetera, will be used on any walls.
Yep.
Add comma, windows, comma, floors, comma, ceilings. Any surface.
How about just, well, they just put "will be used," period, on surfaces?
Well, all right, on surfaces, but I think it needs to be very, very clear and very specific.
So this is for any room there, like one of those spare classrooms?
No, those are not. No, those are not rented out. Those are not. It's the cafeteria, the gymnasium, and the old bandroom.
So those cannot be rented out?
No, those are the three.
Those are the three. The fire marshal's clear.
Did you have any... Okay.
No, we brought this up in the Park and Rec earlier, and there are some zoning restrictions where we can only meet in two places in the whole school. That's a park and rec when we have our meetings. It's either the cafeteria. If that's not used, we're sitting in a small room. We can't even use another room.
What room is that you're sitting in? Small bandroom. Small, tiny, small bandroom.
Yeah, the far room in there. So there's a zoning issue. There's also facilities where on the weekends, if somebody wants to use it, somebody's got to open and close a place. Somebody's got to turn the lights on. Somebody's got to make sure things are put away. Somebody's got to... And then Dr. Mull notes with the Park and Rec, most of the stuff we approve is outside. It's parks. So this is a burden that you're putting on the Park and Rec, where we didn't want to be in charge of this whole building. You've got people running around, doors are open. There's other places where construction's going on. So this is opening up in a Pandora's box. If you start renting it out to certain organizations on off-hours and weekends, then you're going to have to, again, facilities where you go to the high school and you have to use the turf field, or you have to have mandatory by the union, you have to have a person there.
But they're using it now. They're just paying for it.
Yeah, they're using it now. We're just not getting a money.
I understand that, but what I'm saying is that it's going to be more costly, even though I don't think this is going to cover enough if you need to have people there on the weekends and stuff to take care of and open and close it, as opposed to...
Well, they're getting the key to get in there now.
Well, again, I'm talking about an inside facility, not an outside facility. Things happen different inside than they do outside.
Right.
Accountability, construction, whatever it is, you know, doors are open. Now you have other people walking in. It's community center. You can have other groups walking in.
Is it a community?
But prior to this...
I'm just telling you, you have people walking in the halls all the time over there.
If there's a fee, then perhaps they'll just go back to where they were before they were here. Because this is going to add a little bit more money than what they had if they were going to the MACs. The MACs has lost some of their revenue because a lot of groups are going over the Pettibone building because it is free.
My concern, it's not a controlled atmosphere in a huge building.
No, it's not. And there's only one place that's cordoned.
And that's my concern. You have kids, maybe some of them have some kids. It's a big building. And there's parts of it that are dangerous, parts of it have construction, and that's my worry. And that's why when we have the Park and Rec meeting, I go, "There's no way we can do all this. There's no way we can oversee all this." So you can put a number on it, whatever you want to put a number on it, and say, "That's the rental." I'm concerned about what happens inside the building when the rent... That's it. There's nobody in there to supervise and charge, as opposed to just...
We should...
Anybody have anything else?
Could I make a suggestion, Mayor? We get a few people together to, a couple, three of us, or somebody to come in, maybe somebody from Parks and Rec, to talk about this and what would be usable, practical...
What do you mean this concern? Do you have the social services? Do you have the youth center?
Well, they're block...
I understand the block.
You can't get into them. So that's the one good thing. But I know, I've been there with groups. The kids run everywhere.
I walked through that whole building on Friday, and nobody saw me for an hour.
Is it the council's pleasure to take the suggestion of Councilman Francis?
Yes.
Three, three or four people get together, bring it back?
Maybe have a Parks and Rec person.
Mike's going to be on it? You said you were going to be on it? Doug said he'd be on it?
I'll do it.
Katie will be on it? Lisa? All right, we got our three. Okay.
Do we need to make an official motion on that?
No, I only had it for discussion. So you want to let that go?
And we'll bring it back.
Item 14, we go into executive session.
I forgot about that. Okay.
Move to return to regular session and note that during executive session, no motions were made or votes taken. Everybody? Okay, all right. Okay, so we're going to make a motion, item 14. Move to take action on the following job descriptions, item eight, A, C, D, E, and F. Outside 14. Sorry, item 14.
We're not doing the...
I said 14, C, D, E, and F.
Yeah, second.
Any discussion?
No C. No C?
That's the old one.
Oh, then why is it on here? Excuse me.
Because it's old.
Okay. I amend my motion to say, item 14, item D, E, and F.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to adjourn.
Wait, we have one more thing, Walter. We have to... Don't we have to postpone those?
Oh, discussion? We had discussion. There's no action.
Okay. There you go. Go.
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas to everybody.